One, okay, we're starting.
Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to a meeting of the Cupertino City Council. This is a special meeting on January 13th, 2022. Since this is our first public meeting of the new year, let me go ahead and wish everyone on behalf of our city council in Cupertino a happy 2022. Madam City Clerk, would you please take the roll call?
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Here.
Mayor Paul?
And I'm here. Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. And so I did want to take a brief moment to welcome Jim Troop to our city. This is his first meeting with the Cupertino City Council. And so Jim, did you want to say hello to everyone? I know that's not agendized, but I actually don't see Jim's photo up right now. So maybe he's kind of getting his items prepared here. So let's go ahead and go over to item number one on this special meeting. I'll remind our members of the public in special meetings, we do not have oral communications, but we do have the opportunity to speak on each of our public hearing items tonight. Item number one is the consideration of a development proposal to demolish an existing commercial building and residential unit. And the rest of the information is provided in the agenda of the location. However, I should mention is 10-625 South Foothill Boulevard with APN numbers 342-16-087 as well as -088. So do we have a staff presentation on this item? I'm sure we do, but let's find out. We have our Director of Community Development here. Ben Foo, welcome, Ben.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we do have a presentation. Pew Gosh, our planning manager, has one prepared for us. Considering the time and length of the items this may be, I'll just hand it over to Pew and start the presentation. We'll be available for questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much, Director Foo. And I just wanted to give our city manager Troop a very brief opportunity. So Pew, just sorry, unshare your screen for a moment. So I see Jim put his camera on a moment ago. Jim wanted to say hi to the city, so Jim, welcome.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I just, I don't know what I did. I screwed something up on my computer, so IT is helping me now. But thank you for letting me be here. Appreciate the support the Council and the mayor has given me. So I'm into my second week, almost done with two weeks now. It went very quickly. I'm excited to be here. The staff has been just fabulous on getting me around. I've been taking all kinds of tours around the city. And you know, I'm here to help and I know we have a really good staff behind us. So I'm glad I can be part of it. So thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Jim. And let's go ahead and bring this back to our staff. And Pew, I believe you had the presentation. Do you have the presentation timed out, Pew? I think you had mentioned maybe 10 or 15 minutes for the presentation.
At most, that's right.
Okay, very good.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for allowing me to make this presentation. We are talking about a development at 10625 South Foothill Boulevard, which is commonly known as the Foothill Market. Computer would work. Oh, there we go. So it is located at the transition where South Foothill Boulevard turns into Stevens Canyon Road and at the intersection of McClellan and St. Andrews Avenue. There is on the site right now, a commercial building and one home on it that is being considered for development with 18 townhomes, single-family homes and five apartment units. So the five apartment units are part of the total 18 number and with 4,500 square feet of commercial uses along Foothill Boulevard, Stevens Canyon Road right there. The property is currently, has a land use designation of a commercial residential and has a zoning of a planned development with general commercial uses. So in order for the development to proceed, there are a number of permits that are required, which include a rezoning to allow residential uses on the property, a development permit to allow the actual development to move forward, a use permit, an ESA, a tentative map to allow the subdivision of the property, tree removals, and I think that is, and a use permit, which is required on properties that are not zoned for residential uses or not identified as priority housing sites in the city's general plan to allow residential uses there. So once again, as I mentioned, the land use designation is commercial residential. The proposed zoning designation is a planned development zoning district with commercial and residential uses. It has, the site has a gross lot area of 1.55 acres roughly. And after dedications and other improvements, the net lot area would be 1.378. The allowed density on the site is 15 dwelling units to the acre and the allowed height is a maximum of 30 feet. As I mentioned, this is a planned development zoning district. So if they were to come in with a street mind application or straight up with the residential applications, our three zoning standards would apply, which are multifamily housing regulations. However, as an alternative and as a discretionary review process, the developer can propose alternative standards, which they have in this case. And we can talk about those standards later. If the council is interested, I do have a table to identify that and that was also identified in the staff report. But there are alternative standards in the sense that in some cases, for example, you will notice there are a couple of townhomes and row homes at the edges of the property along the north and the south. And those are with, those are attached units. So there are no setbacks between the units that are proposed. But there are setbacks from the front property line along Stevens Canyon Road, the rear property line that attracts the residential uses on the southwest and north there. And also, there are five single-family homes with a zero lot line on one side, but with approximately just over six-foot setback on the east side of each of those properties.
Sorry about that.
Additionally, there is a mixed-use building with a zero lot line fronting Stevens Canyon Road. There is going to be 4,500 square feet of commercial on the ground level with an underground parking garage and five apartment units above it. There is, in general, the, there are open space requirements that have been proposed and these are, they draw inspiration from the heart of the city's specific plan to ensure that there's a minimum amount of private open space for each of the units and also common open space for both the commercial parts of the project and the residential part of the project. The commercial open, the common open space for the commercial area is located closer to the commercial building, closer to McClellan Road and the driveway that will serve the property. And the residential common open space is located tucked behind the mixed-use building between two residential buildings, kind of central to the site. The commercial property will have some parking available up against the northern property line. And the project has been designed so that the driveways that access the property kind of line up with McClellan Boulevard along the north edge and with St. Andrews Avenue on the south edge here. The height proposed complies with the general plan. The density is, proposed is lower than the general plan density. The setbacks, as I mentioned, are unique. They range from zero to 15 feet roughly. Again, I talked about the open space requirements and/or open space proposals already. Parking is proposed at 2.8 spaces for the development, for the residential portion, and the commercial is parked separately as well. As I mentioned, the common open space for commercial is going to have some improvements to allow some sort of a, you know, use that will allow people to gather and use that space freely. And then you have the residential open space that may have improvements such as a barbecue grill or other improvements so that people can enjoy, the residents can enjoy that open space. There is going to be an attached sidewalk along Stevens Canyon Road. There are going to be bike improvements also going to be made on Stevens Canyon Road with a bike lane over there. And the site is providing adequate landscaping, which is kind of indicated on this particular plan. Site planning and architecture, the, you know, proposal is a modern architectural style. If you look at this particular rendering, the windows that you see at the ground level on the closest to the, what you see is actually the ramp going down to the parking garage. And then you have the commercial project kind of further away in this rendering. The reason for having this glass look is to kind of ground the structure and make it look like it's activated space in a sense, because this is really the ramp and we wanted to make sure that the building is articulated well so that it doesn't necessarily look like there's a ramp going down there. With regard to the unit mix and the BMR requirements, there are a number, there are 15 market rate units and the requirements are to provide three of those units, BMR units. There are one and two-bedroom units in the apartments and all the four sale units have three bedrooms each. So I did want to point that out. There was environmental analysis conducted for this and ISM and D was prepared. It was taken to the ERC for review and for their recommendation. The ERC did recommend approval or adoption of the ISM and D. There were mitigation measures for air quality, biological resources, cultural and tribal resources, noise levels, geology and soils and utilities. And we do have our environmental consultant here to help with answering any of, any questions. The Planning Commission met and discussed the project. I believe it was at the end of November, on November 23rd, if I'm not mistaken. And they discussed the unit mix, the potential commercial tenants that could go in. They discussed the circulation on site and they also discussed the outreach. In the end, the commission did vote 5-0 to recommend that the city council approve this proposed project. In response to some community concerns about commercial development, staff is recommending that a condition, the council has options of whether or not to add this particular condition that is being proposed with regard to concurrent development of the mixed-use building and the single-family homes and townhomes at the rear to make sure that, you know, we, what the council wishes to see, which is the commercial part of the project be built concurrently. There has been public outreach and noticing. This was also as part of, proposed, provided as part of the staff report. There've been site signage, there's been newspapers and notices, hearing notices and publication on the city's official notice board and websites. With that, staff concludes this presentation and recommends that the city council adopt the resolutions that are presented tonight and also introduce and conduct the first reading of the ordinance to approve, well, first take the action on the environmental review portion and then introduce and conduct the first reading of the zoning ordinance and also adopt the resolutions to approve all the associated permits with this project. And I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Okay, thanks, Pew. We're going to go ahead and reserve those questions until a little bit later in the process. Is there anybody from the applicant here who is going to be giving a presentation or making remarks prior to going to the public? I see Dan Shaw, you have your camera on, welcome. Did you want to provide some remarks or give a presentation from the applicant?
No, thank you, Mayor. Happy New Year. We, I think Pew did an excellent job. We've been working on this thing for a long, long time. You know, staff, she prepared it well. I do have our chief architect, who's worked on this with me for the last three or four years. Anthony is available as a participant here tonight. If there's any technical questions, ask him. I'm happy, as I did at Planning Commission, to answer any project-related questions.
Okay, thank you, Dan. And let us know what, what business you're with. Are you with the applicant or the architect?
I'm actually a principal in the project. SCR Enterprises stands for Stevens Canyon Road Enterprises. I'm with the applicant and have been an owner and working on this for a number of years.
Okay, excellent, thank you very much. And Anthony's last name is, is what?
Anthony Ho, H-O. He's with LPMD Architecture.
With the architects, okay, great. So seeing no further presentations from either the applicant or staff, what we will do, and I'll give you a breakdown summary of the process here for this hearing, is following our presentations, we're going to be hearing from members of our public. And once members of the public speak, the staff and applicant will have opportunities to respond to what they hear from the members of the public. And then we will go ahead and bring it over to council. So council will be asking their questions and making comments at that point. We'll be allocating, you know, a certain amount of time. Now, I'll just be keeping tabs on how the time's looking. Once we've asked our first round of questions, council will go ahead and have a discussion as to whether it's ripe for a motion to be placed on the table for further deliberation. Once we place that motion on the table, the hearing is closed. And so I'll go ahead and do a time check as well as a status check with council at that point. So right now, we're at members of the public speaking. And I will remind our members of the public that you'll have three minutes each. On top of the three minutes, please have your hand raised to speak by the time that the first speaker is done speaking. And so right now, I have a caller 4927, as well as Jennifer Griffin with her hands raised on Zoom. And so welcome caller 4927. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, hello, this is Jennifer Furlong with the Cupertino Historical Society and Museum. I'm the executive director. And I was just calling to see if it would be possible on behalf of the Historical Society to salvage the Foothill Market sign. We would like to accession that as part of our collection. We believe that it is historical to the city of Cupertino and of historical significance in our ever-changing landscape. And we would like to be able to save it. And that's all that I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jennifer. Greatly appreciated. Welcome, Jennifer Griffin. And Jennifer Griffin is the last hand I see raised. And so that will be the end of our public hearing, public comments, I should say, after Jennifer Griffin. Welcome.
Hello, can you all hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Okay, that was an interesting interlude. As a member of San Jose PAC, I have a Western Appliance refrigerator decal, which was a rescued sign from Western Appliance in San Jose. That was a strange segue. Anyway, yes, thank you, Happy New Year to everyone. I'm, I have followed this project for the last 18 months, years maybe. And I'm really happy with the way the project has progressed. It, I'm really happy and appreciative that a retail component was kept at this site. There is housing options, lots of different types of housing. And then there is retail. And this, my family has used the shopping center for many years. My brother used to go to the pet stop, pet store all the time. And it was a, that area is quite rural and this is kind of a community center there. I think that the, it is a unique site, but I'm really glad that there's been a lot, it looks like there was a lot of detail, a lot of, people took a lot of effort to try to make this something that would fit in the community. And I really think the retail is just a fantastic component of this. So thank you very much. We're real happy to see retail retained, especially this is, people use this area going and coming because there's a lot of traffic up and down the road there. Thank you so much.
Jennifer, and let us bring it back to staff as well as our representatives from the applicant.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I apologize for interruption. I do have, I do just recently received two emails to be read aloud from the public.
Okay, very, very, very good. Madam City Clerk, please, please proceed.
Okay, first email is from Candace Quoc. Dear Mayor Paul and members of the Cupertino City Council, I live upon the hill from the proposed development at 10625 South Foothill Boulevard. I'm ready to express my support for the proposed development, which is long overdue. I drive past this area every day and look forward to when it will be modernized and match the charm of this neighborhood. I urge the council to support this project and move it forward as quickly as possible. Thank you, Candace and Brandon Smith, San Juan Road, Cupertino. That's the first communication. Second communication is from Andrew Wang. And I don't know if I'll get through all of it, but I'll start reading. To the Cupertino City Council, we are deeply disturbed by the contents of the Canyon Crossing Proposals Landscape Planting Plan. Landscape Planting Plan calls for Nandina domestica, heaven, or otherwise known as heavenly bamboo. In the wild, Nandina is found only in Eastern Asia. We oppose the use of Nandina in this landscape planting plan. All parts of Nandina contain cyanide, a deadly poison. The bears can kill animals who eat them, including wild birds as well as domestic dogs and cats. The landscaping, the landscape planting plan calls for Lantana Camara. In the wild, Lantana is found only in Central America. We oppose the use of Lantana in the landscape planting plan. All parts of Lantana are toxic. The California Invasive Plant Council warns that Lantana is known to cause problems in climates similar to California's. El Camara is generally deleterious to biodiversity and human activities and has been the target of control programs for a century. In Australia, India and South Africa, aggressive measures to eradicate El Camara over the last two centuries have been largely unsuccessful and the invasion trajectory has continued upward despite control measures in CABI invasive species compendium. For instance, in Australia, Lantana is so troublesome that the government has outlawed its trade. California's native flora and fauna have spent hundreds of thousands of years or even millions of years co-evolving extremely complex relationships, parasitism, plant defenses, predator, prey, herbivore and so much more, including many more we cannot see, such as bacterial and fungal relationships. An exotic flower in Asia may have pretty colors and even benefit one or two local pollinators, but it can never provide the ecological value of these complex ecological interactions. We live in historic times where climate change and environmental destruction have wrought untold havoc on the world, restoring California's natural ecosystem. Ecosystem is a key step in combating the modern climate crisis. The city of Cupertino's Parks and Rec Master Plan sets conservation as its very first goal. Based on the above, we believe that this landscaping plan does not contribute toward the first goal of the master plan. We commend the Landscape Planting Plan's inclusion of plants such as Arches, Daffo, Filos, Densiflora, Salvi, Clevilandi, Carax, Tumbulicolas and Chukis Patens. I apologize, I probably butchered that. The ability for native plants to create beautiful landscapes that delight people is clearly not lost on the architects of Canyon Crossing. We encourage the architects to do the same in this case as well. We suggest that the architects of Canyon Crossing choose from this non-exhaustive list of California near plants to replace the proposed Nandina and Lantana. We urge the city council to help the Canyon Crossing development proposal until these issues are addressed and resolved.
Okay, thank you, Madam City Clerk. Let's bring this back to our staff as well. I just want to confirm, first of all, that there are no more comments. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay, great. So let's bring this back to our city staff as well as the applicant. Was there anything in follow-up to what you heard from members of the public, either spoken or written, that you would like to respond to at this point?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm happy to work with the Historical Commission if they want to preserve the Foothill Market sign. We're happy to cooperate on that. It doesn't really fit well with hanging it back up on our project because it's not a market, but I'm sure that they may have someplace in the city where they can repurpose that sign for historical purposes. So we're happy to cooperate with that request. And I appreciate the support from a couple other commenters.
Excellent, okay. Any other comments from either staff or anyone from the applicant? I don't see any hands or microphones going unmuted. And so what I will do at this point is go ahead and open it up to our city council. At this point, I ask that people ask clarifying questions. Feel free to deliberate a bit at this point to get us to a sense of, you know, where we, where we stand on, you know, a potential motion. And, you know, because we normally do, I'll go ahead and keep some time here. Let me just, you know, allocate about three minutes each and I'll let you know where things are once we have these questions asked. And so our first hand is from Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I just have a quick question for the applicant. Was it your understanding that you are designated as a neighborhood center from our general plan? Real quick, if someone can answer that from the applicant?
Well, that's a loaded question. This wasn't our first application to the city, so I really, it's just a loaded question. I, we specifically did a PUD. We had an incredible amount of guidance from staff as to what, what the city wanted in this project. So I don't know if, I don't know where we fit in the neighborhood center or the zoning thing. I know that we opted for a PUD plan and made it a mixed-use project to satisfy with the request of staff. Not sure that directly answers your question or what you're looking for me to say, but that's how we spent our time.
Okay, no, I'm just curious because you do provide the commercial component. And I was wondering, and maybe staff can answer this, can, I, I'm interested in the, the member of the public, Andrew, talking about the Nandina and Lantana. I'm particularly interested in the Lantana issue because I know we see, I'm seeing it in some of our medians. And so I'm a little concerned that maybe we need to be switching that out in the future. But do we have the flexibility to make requests of the developer to alter these landscape plants?
Is that within our? The short answer is yes.
Okay, excellent. And that's something that you can negotiate with the developer to move towards something that's climate appropriate?
I think it would be best to amend the condition of approval to allow us the authority to do that and specifically direct us in terms of which plants or all of them to be climate-appropriate and native.
Okay, and that, and for me, I mean, it might be something different for, for the other council members, but I'm a little more open with saying that climate-appropriate and/or native plants. I'm not, I know some people are saying it has, things need to be natives exclusively, but climate-appropriate.
If the council wishes to specifically switch out those plants, I would certainly have those names in the condition. So we're clear about what we're negotiating on.
Okay, exactly, okay. And then just recently, I was looking up the site art requirements that we have for projects. And I'm wondering, is there a requirement for this project to be providing site art and showing the location? Because that was one of the things that I was seeing in the general plan is that they want to see the location of where that art is going to be. So I'm wondering if that is a requirement that we, we need to have for this project.
I'm, I'm gonna look that up, but if it is not as a condition of approval, I don't believe it is, but I'm gonna verify that in just a second.
Okay, thank you. And, and, uh, the city attorney might have some, um, more information on that because we've been asked, I've been asking him some questions, uh, regarding that bit of municipal code and, um, and we'll leave it to that. And that's the, the end of my questions for now. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Moore. Good timing, you're right, it's three minutes. Let's go on to Vice Mayor Chow.
Um, so regarding the plant, um, are those two plants, um, of concern in our list that for, for all the applicants to choose from? Are they selecting from the city's recommended list of?
We do not have a selected, uh, recommended list of, uh, plants to select from for a landscape palette.
Okay, and then regarding the B M R unit, um, I don't see, um, B M R unit size. So, the, the B M R number of bedrooms are not really comparable with the market rate, right? And is there a comparison chart and also the size?
So, the four sale units are all three bedrooms each. Um, we do not anticipate that the largest three-bedroom units would be the B M R units. Um, and we anticipate that the, uh, the, um, the four rent unit would be a two-bedroom unit, uh, but it may not be the largest two-bedroom unit, if that makes sense.
Do we have the square footage comparison?
I'm pulling the plans up now so we can look it up.
Okay, great. And then, um, how about the tree removal? Or I, from the picture, I don't see trees. So, are trees being removed? Are there going to be trees planted?
Sorry, I'm trying to multitask here. Sorry. Um, it, it, yes, there are trees being removed and I believe they are identified in the staff report. I'm just gonna go here and, um, pull that up. Uh, let's see.
There's another question I have, the, is the B M R income level? Because they are, one is at the moderate and then, um, median income level, so they are at the higher end of the B M R. I wonder what's our requirement?
Yes.
And, but, but first of all, I like this project. I like how it's well designed, that it has the residential and then, uh, well-designed commercial center and underground parking. And we appreciate, uh, this project, yeah.
So, I, I can speak to the tree removals, uh, Council, Vice Mayor Chow. Um, there are actually no protected trees that are being removed, so I, I apologize for the confusion earlier. I'm mixing up the two projects, but no, no true protected tree removals with this particular project. However, the applicant is providing, uh, many trees as part of the plan development, um, over and above. You know, like I said, there are no tree removals proposed.
Hugh, actually, in the, um, in the subject of the, uh, agenda, it does indicate there are four protected trees.
Now, I'm confusing myself. Both staff reports pulled up. You're right, uh, Mr. Mayor. There are four trees. I think one is a persimmon, one is an oak tree. Um, let me see, one is, and the other two are also smaller trees. And I'm gonna pull that up right now.
Uh, we, I'll just-
Yes, uh, one palm tree and one redwood tree. And so, yes, the applicant is, uh, replacing them with six twenty-four-inch coastlive oak trees and one thirty-six-inch box coastlive oak trees. And they're in addition to that planting nine additional trees throughout the site. So, apologies for the confusion.
All right. Okay, Vice Mayor, let me go on to, uh, Councilmember Willie at this point. Um, and, uh, I'll, I'll go over and, um, I'll give you some of my time for you to follow up later. Um, Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, great, thank you. Nice presentation. Project's looking good. Uh, to try and, you know, kind of get a real brief synopsis of how well or what, what issues there are. The project versus the general plan, the heart of the city, the municipal code. You know, real brief for the, um, you know, the residents that are watching, you know, one point five acres, um, eighteen, uh, residential units, forty-five hundred, uh, retail. What other aspects and how do those conform to the general plan? I think you said presently it's R three, so that zoning would get changed. But can you briefly tell us how well this conforms?
Yes, I could go over that. Uh, so there are, this project does, um, support and, uh, put full, uh, you know, um, comply with several of the city's general plan policies. Uh, we did identify a list, uh, from the general plan in the staff report, and I'm gonna reference that. Um, it does talk about pedestrian oriented, it supports the policies regarding pedestrian-oriented public spaces. Uh, as I mentioned, there are two public, uh, there's one public, uh, uh, commons, open space for the commercial area and one, uh, common open space for the residential area. They're both at the street level. Um, so those are pedestrian-oriented. Um, in terms of site planning, um, there is a, it, it connected internal street. Um, it kind of lines up with existing, uh, streets in the public right-of-way. Um, there are active uses along the street, which is all the commercial uses that they're proposing. Um, there is going to be outdoor dining potentially on, in that, um, uh, plaza area. Um, there's, uh, site planning, um, there, there, uh, like I mentioned, the, um, there's framing of the street in terms of how the building is, uh, proposed. Um, there's building design. Um, the building itself is, um, compatible in terms of height and massing with the structures around it. Um, it has an attractive design, um, which is, uh, strategy L U three dot three dot one. Um, they're using, um, different, uh, massing techniques, um, different materials. Um, a lot of, um, variation in the landscape palette. Uh, they're screening the equipment, the, uh, mechanical equipment that they need for the property. Um, let's see.
And, and so, I think that's good. I think that's good. So, the follow-up question would be, how about the impact to the surrounding community? Uh, traffic, noise, uh, things like that. Um, how do those things fit?
Sure, um, in general, it is my understanding that the, uh, traffic, uh, impacts are lower than what, what it is replacing. And we do have our environmental consultant here who can actually speak to that. Um, Terry, would you like to take that question about traffic?
I can, but you did answer it correctly, that this, uh, the residential does generate less trips than the commercial. That, that's kind of a general rule about the two land uses. So, any noise that would come from trips or, or cars is less under the proposed condition.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, great. Um, thank you, everyone. And, um, yeah, so, you, you've reached your three minutes. Uh, John and I, I went ahead and started my timer as well. But, um, Councilmember Way, did you have any questions at this point that you wanted to ask of staff or the applicant? And I just, uh, unmute yourself. Hopefully, it's not my turn. Oh, there you go.
No, no, I, I couldn't find the unmute button. Okay, so, one quick question. Um, I really appreciate the project. It has been done, you know, very thoroughly with environmental impact reports. Um, it, 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 the applicant did say it's a long pro, I mean, they've been working on it for, um, a couple of years. So, when I'm reading the report, it says it starts September fourteenth, twenty eighteen, and deemed complete in January sixth, twenty twenty-one. So, my quick question, is that a normal timeline for a project this size? Or is it because we are in COVID that it takes a little bit longer to process an application like this?
Councilmember Ware and Way, and through the mayor, if I could, uh, quick response. Um, tha- thank you for the question, Councilmember Way. So, you know, development projects take a variety of, of, of timeframe to, to, to complete. So, while it may be somewhat uncommon for a project this size to take as long as it has, um, the project that has some environmental, um, concerns that need to be addressed. Um, there's also, also some, uh, transportation studies that require, uh, more details that require some discussion as well. I think there were some extensive comments from other agencies, um, outside of our, our city, uh, family here, that's, uh, taking a little bit, uh, to coordinate a response and completion for, for the applicant.
Thank you, Ben. So, is it, um, safe to say that this project has been really gone through a good detailed, um, reports and, uh, reviews so that it's really, um, a pretty complete project right now?
Yeah, I will say that with all the projects we bring forward for your consideration, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Way. Um, I'll go ahead and bring it back to our other members of council. Uh, you know, consolidated, we're doing pretty well on time. We have another few minutes left. Let's say about four, four and a half between, uh, Councilmember Way and, and my own remaining time. So, I, I do see a couple of hands from the Vice Mayor as well as Councilmember Moore. Um, Vice Mayor, did you want to, uh, ask some follow-up questions at this point?
Uh, could I get answers for the B M R type and size comparison? I think Hugh was trying to multitasking.
Right.
Is there? And I have a question about the setback.
So, I'm happy to pull up the plans and I do not believe that the B M R units are identified on the plans at this point. However, um, let's see. The, uh, I hope everybody can see my screen and it's legible. Oh, no, not yet.
So, do we not require this kind of comparison in the, in the project application? Shouldn't there be a B M R program description with this information?
That is generally negotiated once the project is approved. But as we mentioned, we do require the, the units to be, um, uh, distributed and be, um, of, of typically of sizes because there is a B M R agreement. That means the developer does need to sign. Um, and so, that generally happens when that B M R agreement is being signed. However, I do have the table pulled up here of the different, um, B M R, uh, not the B M R, but the, um, the, the units and their sizes, um, that, that are being, uh, proposed, uh, by the applicant. And, um, so, the, the first table that you see here is the different, um, single-family homes and the duplex and triplexes. Uh, and the second table here is the, uh, different, uh, flats that are proposed.
On so, but we don't know which ones will be the B M R ones?
Correct.
How do we, then how do we determine that it complies with B M R?
So, it is, our, our B M R requirement says that the, um, the mix is supposed to be the same. So, if there are three-bedroom units, that there be three bedrooms in the units that are B M R, which in this case, it doesn't matter which B M R unit is provided because the number of, uh, bedrooms would be the same. Um, but if the council has a, has a preference, I mean, they could certainly voice that at this point or make that a condition of approval. But that is generally negotiated when the B M R agreement is being negotiated. Um, with regard to the, um, apartments, as I mentioned, one of the two-bedroom apartments would be made available, um, for, as a B M R unit. And you can see, um, the two-bedroom apartments are identified in the second table here.
And in terms of the income level, do we have a requirement for the income level?
Yes. Um, yeah, so, the, um, in general, uh, our requirement is, uh, for this project, it, I believe there are two units that are required to be provided. And as a result, uh, because there are two units that need to be provided, one of them needs to be median and one of them needs to be moderate income. Uh, and for the apartments, that one unit needs to be, I believe.
So, it's very low.
Yeah, oh.
It's, uh, going to be on the very low income, yes. It's on a very low income.
So, that complies with our requirement?
Correct.
Okay, and my question on setback is, I see that this project has no setback requirement in our code right now. And so, that's a concern. I mean, not about this project, but about the lack of requirement for setbacks.
That is, that is a planned development, uh, unit, um, uh, that is a feature of the Plan Development Zoning District, which allows a developer to propose a project and propose setbacks, um, whether there's zero to any number. And in this case, um, there are setbacks proposed from the, uh, areas of surrounding the project, essentially that about the residential properties. Um, those setbacks are, I believe, a minimum of fifteen feet or tw- thirteen feet, something like that, to allow for, uh, a, a good enough setback on those residential-
But it's zero, it's zero feet along Foothill. Zero feet, so there is no setback, no slope, um, for, for this planned development project, so.
Okay, that's the, uh-
Then if this project is streamlined, then there's no qu- nor, no, no requirement.
Okay, we, we actually don't have, uh, time remaining on this initial tranche. Let me do a check-in here, uh, with Councilmembers Moore and Willie. Um, do you have a time estimate on some of your follow-up questions and about how long it would take? Just so we have an idea of this.
Uh, I can let, uh, Councilmember Willie, uh, go ahead of me. I, I want to look something up at the moment, if, if that's all right.
Did you, I mean, did you want a couple of minutes or, you know, it would take longer, you know?
Could be three, three, four minutes, maybe.
Hmm, okay, Councilmember Willie?
I think, you know, maybe, uh, minute and a half.
Okay, so, say another five minutes or so, and then, um, we'll see where we're at at that point. Okay, Councilmember Willie, take it away.
Yeah, okay, so, off for, uh, staff, you know, uh, I like what I heard from the developer. Uh, he got a lot of guidance from staff, you know, from the city council, from this city councilman's point. General plan, general plan, general plan. I like that. Um, I also like that staff is asking for authority to negotiate on the, uh, landscape. Okay, now on to the, uh, question, and this is for the city attorney. You know, waiting until an approval to negotiate the, the details of the B R, uh, B M R units. Can't, can't we, uh, have those things put out at, you know, for, for the approval? They can definitely be, uh, negotiated during, but can't we, uh, have that done first? Do we need to update the general plan or the municipal code?
Um, I think if, go, go ahead, Chris.
Go ahead, Hugh. So, I don't know if it would be a general plan or even a municipal code requirement. I can say that I've never seen it done that way before. It's, every time, I've always seen the unit designated at the time that the regulatory agreement is negotiated, which is, you know, typically a post-approval process. Hugh, did you have something to add?
No, I was gonna say that, that's just how our B M R program has been administered, uh, and the, exactly what you said.
Well, I think, I think for the rest of the council, I would be in favor of making it, uh, more, uh, defined, you know, when it comes to us. And then, at that point, if we're needing to be negotiated, it's very tough to say, please approve this, but we won't know what the B M R units are going to consist of un- until it's out of our hands. So, so I would hope that we would, uh, push for us to update our requirement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Willie. Let's go back to Councilmember Moore.
Okay, um, thank you. Uh, looking at the, the land use designation map, L U seventeen from our general plan, they're showing an asterix and, and labeling this a neighborhood center. Um, and then, our, our zoning, I just wanted to clarify this with, uh, Councilmember Willie. The current zoning is, uh, planned development, uh, general commercial, and the new zoning is planned, um, general commercial, uh, residential. So, that, that's the switch that we're going to. It also has a, a non-residential land use designation with a definition that says something like it's, you know, predominantly, um, uh, um, commercial, uh, uses. So, um, this project, while it does have commercial, it is predominantly residential for the site. Um, so, I, I've had some question about whether or not we are truly consistent with the general plan. And I've, uh, heard some answers that there's some, um, uh, soft language, uh, things of that nature for this, um, for this site. Um, so, I'm, I'm a little bit con- concerned about that. Uh, and I, I do also want to bring up that you can have twenty-one units at this location. So, um, they, they actually could, uh, have three more units, um, here. Uh, and I haven't yet heard the, heard the answer about the site art. I believe that's chapter nineteen, one forty-eight in the, in the general plan for, um, art. Uh, and, uh, and I looked at it a couple of times, um, and there's this one sentence where, where you're going to designate where the art will be located on the project. Or you, I mean, you could have an lieu of fee for it, um, but I am, I'm curious- Um but I am, I'm curious about about that. Uh are we going to have art on this project?
Yes, I I can actually, that was part of my multitasking, trying to figure that out. So yes, uh there is an art, public art requirement on this project. Um and it will um when we um eventually the artwork is proposed by the applicant, we do work with the applicant to make sure that it is proposed at a prominent location on the site. In this case, it is probably going to be located somewhere around that um driveway that you know fronts McClellan because that is the prominent uh entrance to that uh property. Um so, but there is a condition of approval about that in the, in the resolution.
Okay, and I saw that the the percentages for the value of the art has changed. I'm not sure how you would calculate it um based on the, it looked like cost of construction. Uh and is that something that the developer gives you that number and you you run the numbers? Okay, okay.
That is right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Uh let's go back to Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor Chow, about how much longer do you have for questions at this point?
Um happy to make a motion.
Okay, let's hear it.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to um approve the staff recommendation to uh to adopt resolution number twenty-two dash zero 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 one. Do I need to read everything or just a staff recommendation with the addition that um the the conditions of approval will include the, to give the staff authority to negotiate the landscaping choices?
Okay, uh so it's as uh you recited with regard to the landscaping choices, the language that you have uh placed into there. Um let me go ahead, before I ask for a second, let me go ahead and remind our council that once we get a second and we start the deliberative process, I'm gonna go ahead and and close the hearing. Um and so did anyone have further questions at this point? I do see Pew with her hand up. I do see that. Um and so let me go ahead as well. Uh if we don't have any further questions, let me tell you how this will go. I will ask the city clerk to conduct the first reading of the ordinance uh two-two dash two-two-three-six. But let's go back to staff first. Pew, did you have anything to? Desk item, so if uh there's anything.
I I did want to clarify whether the uh proposed desk condition of approval, it's not presented at this time, but it was part of the presentation uh should be, is part of the Vice Mayor's motion or not, which was about the phasing of the mixed-use building.
Oh, right.
Okay, so there there are two items. Uh there's a desk item for, I believe, what was um the recommended action C as well as what Pew is referring to here regarding the phasing in the presentation that she provided. And so Vice Mayor Chow, will you incorporate those into your motion?
Uh yes.
Any further questions from council at this time?
That means we are requiring concurrent construction of the commercial building and the residential building?
That is correct.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I do see a hand raised from Councilmember Willie. Councilmember Willie, at this point, did you have a question or did you care to second the motion?
Uh I was definitely second. I did have two just quick questions, I think.
Okay, let's take those first.
Okay, um I I was happy Vice Mayor Chow pointed out that there's no setback. What is the distance from the curb of the street to the uh building um such that that is the amount of space um before the surface of the buildings reached? And that would be the first question.
Okay, so we'll wait for staff. I mean, that's a.
The second question then being, it was mentioned that there's bike improvements along the uh foothill. Is that developer paid or it was just uh uh mentioned as uh an extra thought?
Councilmember Willie, could you please repeat your second question? I was trying to measure the distance from the side.
That's good, good, because I spotted, I looked at the drawing, it didn't just jump out at me. Uh the second question being the, it was mentioned that there are bicycle and pedestrian improvements being made made along the frontage of the property, and are those being paid for by the uh 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 applicant or is that city?
That's an easy one, yes, they're being paid for by the applicant and I'm still trying to measure, but my um when I'm looking at the plans, it looks to me like it's about ten feet from the edge of the curb to that building. But I am still trying to measure that here.
Okay.
That is correct, Pew, it's ten feet.
Thank you, Chad.
Great, thank you.
Okay, great. Uh Vice Mayor Chow, you still have your hand raised?
I do have one question. Uh we, uh but first regarding the bike and so the bike improvement is onsite, right? It's not on the bike path. I think onsite they they have a bike shop now and then they provided some bike, some friendly features for bikers um in on this property. I don't remember what exactly were those, right? It's not really important of the bike path along foothill.
My understanding is that the bike lane is on private, on public property in the public right of way.
But are they going to improve that?
Yes.
Oh, so they will. Add improvement too.
I, yeah, I think Public Works can help me answer that question, but my understanding is that the bike lane or the bike improvements are in the public right of way and that the developer is paying for those improvements.
Okay, yeah, for disclosure, I did meet with uh Patrick Qualk and then I understand that this is a um a location that's frequented by some bikers who bike along foothill. And then they are providing um this commercial location so that it will continue ser- to serve that population. And.
Okay, great.
There is a hand from Dan Shaw.
Yeah.
Myself or Chad can probably answer this question. There's two, the the way the city works from, in my experience in the last um several months, years, is that there are requirements in the public area and there are requirements on the private commercial area. So we have bike lockers located in the uh garage area of our proposal. So there are some bike lockers and storage things uh to store bikes securely in the basement area as well as bike racks up adjacent to the commercial area that Pew mentioned that will be available outside of the commercial forty-five hundred square feet area. If a tenant um comes that is in the restaurant business or can accommodate to the weekend bikers, there'll be plenty of room for them to park and store their bikes on site. Um but we don't have any control over who those tenants might be. But we have accommodated to the city's code uh for onsite bike stuff and then um Public Works is having us um put curb and gutter and sidewalk, which none exists right there, and a bike lane all on that area, so it'll be much safer going through there for the biking and walking community who has, which they have no safe place to go at this point in time. Chad?
Um that's correct, Dan. Uh sidewalks being installed along the project frontage will, which will enhance pedestrian um safety. And the bike lanes are being slightly widened to provide six-foot uh lanes along this property frontage. Um for anybody who's biked out there, uh you know that the lanes, the bike lanes are uh minimal at best along portions of foothill and along this property frontage is one of those areas where currently it's minimal but are being expanded to six feet.
Hmm, that's good to know. So one other question regarding setback is, uh I think Pew mentioned that if the project were uh in going through the streamlined approval, it would have needed to comply with the R three requirement, which would have a setback, right, along uh foothill? But now since this is going through discretionary approval, it doesn't need to comply with R three. And then the current plan development doesn't have any setback requirement or slope. Is that, so so my question, is is that right? And then my question is, what would have been the setback and slope if this were R three?
Uh if this were R three, we would probably have to see um what the front property line would be. But had all of the property line along Stevens Canyon and Foothill been the front, then the setback would have been twenty feet uh over there. However, with that said, it that would um certainly, tho- those multifamily units would be much smaller um and and would not be single-family or townhome units. So the whole purpose of allowing Plan Development Zoning District is to give flexibility to come up with uh setbacks that would accommodate the types of units, the different types of units that have been provided.
Mm-hmm, okay, yeah, thank you.
Okay, great. I have one question and one question only. Um what what is the applicant doing to anticipate? Um you know, some evolving changes in transit right now. So we might have drop-offs, delivery of food, pickups. Uh is there anything within the plans? Or is the anticipation just, you know, you might have to reserve a parking space or two for vehicles like that?
Assume that question was directed at me, Mayor?
I'm I'm happy to get information from either Pew or anybody who cares to provide.
Number one, number one is that the forty-five hundred square feet is general commercial space, so we have no idea as a developer, what type of tenant we may have. We may or may not have any food-related tenants there. Um we do have, I believe it's five or six parking places that are at grade level um right adjacent to the commercial area. Um we may, from a property management um uh perspective, have to identify some of those as either short-term or um you know, if we continue to have a COVID problem in the next few years, we may have to identify some as pickup spaces for people to pick up uh to-go food. If there's a restaurant in the premises, some of them may have to be identified as short-term spaces. Um I mean, you could have a childcare facility there and have to have a couple of spaces available for people to pick up and drop off kids. I mean, I, we have no idea what those uses are gonna be, so you're you're gonna have to just trust us that as professional real estate property management people will figure out those um those issues as they arise.
Okay, I I was really thinking more from the perspective of uh of residents that are there. Right, they might request food delivery from the outside. They might actually be changing their their transit-oriented patterns. Right, in- instead of, you know, relying so much on personal vehicles, they could be utilizing more of a drop-off, you know, pickup kind of um y- you know, um paradigm. We have, we have a shuttle service that we're um rolling out again in Cupertino. It's currently in its, I believe, second or third month uh since we paused it for the pandemic. So I I I'm just trying to get a sense of whether that's been anticipated. Um and I hear what you're saying with regard to the retail component and there are parking requirements. Um and I I I think that's, that's a good answer, uh but I'm just wondering if it's a complete answer with regard to what's available for that type of parking. And I did see, uh Chad, you had your hand raised. Did you want to elaborate a a bit more on the answer?
Uh just slightly. Um there are no facilities for like drop-off or pull-over being proposed within the public right-of-way. Uh with that stated, uh there are, as Dan had indicated, a number of uh parking stall or parking spaces on sites. And additionally, the site is equipped with a, you know, an onsite road that pulls people off of foothill um and would allow for pretty fairly easy drop-off of people from like an Uber or, you know, some other uh um taxi service, uh as well as uh, you know, there's adequate space for somebody to park on on that road uh and drop-off delivery stuff. Um and it shouldn't, uh it shouldn't create any safety issues.
Okay, well, that was my question. Thank you very much for uh the answers from the applicant and from our staff member. Um let's go ahead and take a second. Um and uh once we do that, I will go ahead and ask our city clerk to conduct that first reading of the ordinance. Did anyone want to second Vice Mayor Chow's? Uh Councilmember Moore?
I I I'm sorry, I I just have a quick question. I just ran across something regarding the vesting tentative. Um you've got fif- fifteen separate parcels in the vesting tentative. Uh you are, you're not intending for those to be uh like for sale. You've got one to thirteen are occupied by townhomes. Are you anticipating those being for sale?
So numbers, lots one through thirteen are for sale. Lot number fourteen is the commercial and apartment building. And lot number fifteen, I believe, is the open space. So all of the states that is owned in common, so all fourteen uh titled owners will own the common area, the road, the private roads and the common park area are considered lot fifteen. So each titled owner will own like lot seven and one fourteenth of lot fifteen, which is the common area. As a real estate professional, that's how this is typically done in a PUD HOA-type uh project. Does that answer your question?
Uh yeah, so and and are the BMRs then numbered this, in, are they in this one to fifteen, which?
So the BMRs, my understanding from staff, and I had this conversation with them, is that um the BMRs are calculated based on the size of your units. And the best example that Pew gave me and previous staff members is is if you had a hundred-unit project and you have to have fifteen units that are below-market rent units, you'd have to have five one-bedroom, five two-bedroom and five three-bedroom units. We happen to have all the same number of units in every single one of our units that are for sale, so therefore staff didn't take a lot of time to figure out the this, the uh you know, the schematic of of what units are BMR. So two of those thirteen units will be for-sale BMR units and the city will conduct and manage those. And one of the five apartment units on the second floor above the commercial will be a BMR apartment, which is also administered by the city. Is that correct, Pew?
That is correct. And and in terms of the dispersion of the units, I had mentioned to Dan that, you know, one, one of the two for-sale units would be kind of towards north of the property and the other one towards the south of the property.
But, okay, is, and the third one is a, is a, you're saying is a rental apartment?
Yes.
So, okay, so instead of doing the twenty percent times the eighteen and getting three-point-six, which would round up to four for-sale units, we're getting two for-sale units and then one rental. Okay, thank you.
Right, and and they, just so we're clear, uh this applicant did apply before the city changed its requirements for the twenty percent uh BMR um requirement. So the requirement for this particular application is a fifteen percent.
Um thank you, Pew. Was the applicant, what was the application um deemed complete uh before or after the the ordinance was adopted?
It was accepted before and the uh the first rounds of review on this application were done before the um city changed its requirement. So they were aware that the fifteen percent requirement.
Uh so may I ask when the housing accountability thirty-day, there I call it shot clock started?
Um I would have to look into that.
Okay, I I would like to know that, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Way?
Yes, a real quick question for the applicant, actually, um to 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 do the simultaneous construction. Is there pros and cons or is it doable or is not an issue? Or it could be an issue?
Um it's actually the only way to do it. Um the way we designed this project, the underground parking garage is actually underneath the road that Mr. uh Mosley suggested that, you know, it's really a two-lane road that goes through the project, that's a private road. That private road is mostly, or probably fifty percent, constructed over the parking garage. So there, we can't we just, we basically um engineering and structurally and construction-wise, it all has to happen at the same time. So I appreciate uh council and staff's discussion of all this, but it really has to happen at the same time. Otherwise, it all isn't gonna dovetail together. I guess, in defensive staff, you could build the parking garage and leave just a concrete pad sitting there and not build the retail building. Um I think that would be a poor economic and um all kinds of other choices on our part. So we plan to build the entire thing at the same time.
All right, thank you.
When would you um plan to pull permits on demolition if this were approved?
Um well, we actually vacated the site last spring when we thought we were gonna be on the city council agenda in May and June as was originally publicly noted. So we've had the unfortunate um task of trying to keep our site safe and people out of it and lots of other problems for the last six months waiting for this, so.
You're saying yes.
The answer is very quickly. Um the answer is yes and quickly, so.
All right.
There's no, there's nobody on the site at this point in time.
Okay, well, if no one's gonna take me up on a second, I'll go ahead and second Vice Mayor Chow's motion. Okay, I see nods, great. Uh so I I'm seconding. Um Madam City Clerk, could you please conduct the first reading on uh ordinance number two-two dash two-two-three-six?
This is the first reading of ordinance number two-two dash two-two-three-six, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino approving the rezoning of two parcels from Plan Development with Cu- from planned development with general commercial uses, PCG, to planned development with general commercial and residential uses, PCG, Res Z dash two-zero-one-eight dash zero-two.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. And, um, let's go ahead and close out the hearing and start the deliberative process. Um, you know, I think our questions have been fairly thorough. Um, I'm going to kind of go in reverse order here. Uh, let, let's try to wrap this, you know, within about a minute. I'll try to lead by example. I, I think we have some pretty good direction based upon our, our questions. Uh, there's the, you know, concern about the native plants. Let's try to, you know, adhere to that. Let's adhere to the spirit of the BMR manual. Um, you know, it does look like it was pretty close to the border. So, you know, if you're going to cut, you know, in favor of people trying to find affordability, I would say, try to cut for the more expensive side of the median if you can, um, with regard to the market assessment. Um, you know, for me, I, I think that we do have a change in transit, uh, coming. We're already in the middle of it. And so, you know, that, that wasn't kind of an empty comment. I mean, I, I hope that we can plan out for uh, how this is going to be looking in terms of, you know, your, your various, uh, you know, Ubers, Lifts, uh, other types of, uh, drop-offs and, uh, and deliveries. Um, I, I'd like to see some, you know, thought put into being able to, uh, have people recharging cars and maybe early using. Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and mute you because you're making, all right, great. So, um, it's just, let, let's go ahead and try to, you know, be forward-thinking about this. But I think, uh, the comments that we've made can constitute, you know, good direction and hopefully staff takes that ball and, uh, and, and, and runs with it. So, uh, anyone else want to make some comments in deliberation at this point? Or are we in pretty good shape? Vice Mayor Chow?
Uh, one final question. So we are doing a rezoning, um, but then we don't need a general plan amendment. It's, but we will be changing the zoning map, which is part of the general plan. So I'm a little confused, um.
Okay, Vice Mayor Chow, just for, just for the purposes of this, I'll go ahead and reopen the hearing, but I just want to make it very clear. When we close the hearing, we're going to go in the deliberative process. Um, so, uh, Chris, did you want to go ahead and answer Vice Mayor Chow's question before I close back the hearing?
So, um, the, the zoning, uh, the zoning ordinance and the zoning map are separate from the general plan. There is a requirement that the zoning and the general plan be consistent. And as long as coun, as council can make that determination of consistency, um, it can approve the project.
And that's baked into the current motion, correct? No, I, I mean, from Chris, the, the consistency. All right, great.
That's correct.
Okay, I'll go ahead and, um, close that hearing again. Hopefully it's not another question from Councilmember Moore. Did you want to deliberate or ask questions?
Uh, it's a question of, uh, yeah, of the city attorney, um,
Great.
Uh, regarding.
Let me reopen the hearing again. All right. So, so let, let me, let me just be really clear about this, okay? So when we, when we close the hearing, that means there are no more questions. Okay, so you know, I'm, I'm trying to give the opportunity to ask those questions, but, you know, put your hands up, okay, before we call for that second and, and we have, you know, any, any reading of an ordinance needed. Councilmember Moore?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Paul. So I'm a little concerned that we're actually looking more at a Housing Accountability Act question and when the application was deemed complete, um, and that the, it, just to say it kind of in colloquial language, that our, our ship has sailed on arguing about the, um, the consistency of the project with the general plan. Because in, in, in my eyes, when I look at what's in the general plan, the land use designation, um, the neighborhood commercial center requirements, uh, and, and then couple that with the zoning that we have, um, that, that I don't see consistency. Um, but it sounds like, in my opinion, I don't, I don't feel like I have a choice about the approval because then it, um, I'm weighing that against the Housing Accountability Act. Uh, if you have some comments about that, I appreciate it.
Yeah, so, so I, yeah, so I, I appreciate that, I do appreciate the comment. You know, so the council is, um, limited to applying, um, objective, if, if there's an inconsistency with an objective standard, that does have to be identified within the time period set forth in the Housing Accountability Act. Um, and that, so that would limit the ability of council to, uh, deny the project or, um, approve it in a way that reduces the density of the project.
Okay.
That, that, that answers your question. Sorry, Mayor.
Okay, great. Well, um, I'm going to go ahead and close this hearing, uh, for the third time and, you know, we'll go back into the deliberative process. If we have any, uh, deliber, deliberation to make, I mean, this is essentially dialogue amongst council on the motion on the table. Vice Mayor Chow?
Another question. So I'd like to just say that, um, I like how the, the applicant has been pretty considerate in considering, um, many aspects and providing setback to the, the other part of the, to the neighbors and sufficient setback. And the only thing I don't like is the zero setback along Foothill. So I wish, um, there is at least some minimum standard in planned development in the future so that because when there is no standard, we would easily get zero. And, uh, for pedestrian, it's just not um, pleasant to walk on a sidewalk, along a busy street with zero setback, no landscaping between the sidewalk and the building. Um, that's the, that's my only, um, concern with the project. Um, but I think I like, um, other things I see. Um, I do realize that we have to rezon to allow residential at this location. But I think it, it's suitable for this location. And I, I appreciate that we get two for-sale BMR units and, uh, one rental. And I see that they will likely look, it's going to be about the same size. But, but I wish that as part of the project application and also part of the staff report, we could have at least a comparison table, um, just, I think we had that for the Westport. I wish we had that for every project. And I like that staff provided the setback table compared with our requirement and what they have provided. That table will make it very easy to read. And I wish we had that with every staff report. So thank you for including that. Um, and the staff has really done a great job on, um, negotiating with applicants to make this a great project. So thank, um, thank you for that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Councilmember Moore?
Okay, uh, thank you, Mayor Paul. Uh, I, I have a little bit of an issue with the use of the, the heart of the city standards for this, uh, particular location, uh, given it's, uh, heading out into a more rural part of, of Cupertino. Um, I do think, uh, for me, if this project were to come through again, I would, I, I think it should be having a, a general plan amendment. Um, and given the current environment of, uh, we have so many, um, residential units which we need to cite within the city, uh, that I would, at the very least, want to see that the maximum density, um, is being built to. Um, and I, I did meet also with Patrick Kwak, but, uh, it was when I was on the planning commission. It's been a very long time. The, the project looks somewhat similar to what I recall. I really appreciate how they, they did the screening, uh, using the glass along, um, along the, the frontage in order to, um, screen the ramp down, uh, below. Uh, and I think that the, this applicant was given a lot of requirements which they needed to meet, which as we move on to the next project, you'll see a little bit of a difference, um, that they have the commercial areas, they paid attention to detail for having outdoor spaces, not just for the residents but for the commercial spaces. Uh, and I think they've, they've done a very good job, uh, making it as attractive. And, uh, and hopefully they get a lot of the bicyclists coming through there and they have a place to, to stop and, uh, you know, a cafe would be awesome. But, uh, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Wei?
Just very brief comment how I believe this project is well thought of, um, as, you know, the setback line in the front is low because they have the common day housing, single-family housing in the back, so setback line with the single family in the existing neighborhood can have that white setback line. So I believe every project, this is a well-thought-of project because we have to make some pros and cons comparisons. And I really appreciate the staff's hard work with the applicants to make this really a, uh, well-rounded project. So, uh, thank you both staff and the applicants.
Thank you, Councilmember Wei. Councilmember Willie?
Yeah, so I, I echo what I've just had, what, uh, heard. What I would add is I, I like the, uh, the verbiage of, I think this does reflect well for the Cupertino, for the character of Cupertino. I think a lot of projects do not reflect the character of Cupertino. And I think our, our residents, our community moved here because of the character. And so we really should be doing everything we can to promote the aspects that reflect the character. We're kind of short on setback, but the height is kept to thirty. All things said, I, I think this is, uh, a good, um, uh, outcome. And I would like it really understood that we are negotiating. You know, we are willing to give and take and that's the whole purpose. And we've been doing it for a couple hours now. And I think that really speaks well for the council and this process. And at that, I think we need to move forward. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Councilmember Willie. With that, I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote here since, uh, we don't have further hands raised. Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call vote?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great. Um, does anyone want to take a five-minute break or should we go into item number two? I see a nod. I see a hand. Okay, let's go ahead and reconvene at eight-ten. It is now eight-oh-five. So we'll see you in five minutes. We'll go ahead and, do we have our members of staff to present this? Okay, so Pugh's here. Great.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, it'll be, it'll be Pugh Goish, our planning manager, again.
Wonderful. Okay, so, um, City Manager Troops here, Director Fu is here, and Pugh Goish from Plannings here. Um, we'll go ahead and start this back up. I believe, uh, we actually have, um, well, most of our council anyway, uh, is back. So item number two is the second and last item on our special agenda tonight. This is the consideration of a development proposal, uh, located at two-two-six-nine-zero Stevens Creek Boulevard. And, uh, the rest of the, um, description is available on our agenda. And, uh, as stated, uh, we'll have Pugh Goish from our planning department go ahead and provide the presentation. Uh, Pugh, what's the, what's the estimate on the time for the presentation here?
About the same, ten to fifteen minutes tops.
Okay. And then a question for the applicant. Is there a presentation from the applicant as well?
No, there's not a presentation from us, but, uh, we're available for questions. I'm one of the architects and John Thatch is another architect on projects. We're both available for any questions.
Okay, go ahead and introduce yourself, please.
Hi, I'm Jamie Mather. I'm an architect. I've been working on this project, uh, for about three years now. And then we have John Thatch. Uh, he can introduce himself there as well. John, would you like to introduce yourself?
Welcome, John. Yeah, let us know who you are, John.
John, did you want to introduce yourself?
Maybe, maybe his volume.
Yeah, here, okay. Well, I can introduce him for us. He's a principal at Dolan and, uh, he can answer any questions that you have as well.
Okay, great. I see Eric Ramakrishnan?
Yes, Eric, uh, I'm Eric Ramakrishnan, uh, attorney for the applicant. If there are any legal questions, I'm here to answer those as well.
Okay, great. So, uh, no prepared presentation. So we'll go ahead and, uh, go as the order was stated in item number one. That's going to be the presentation from staff, um, followed by questions from the, or rather, I should say, comments from the public. Uh, we'll then bring that back up to staff and the applicant, uh, that, who can follow up on the questions and comments from, from the public. And then we'll go ahead and, uh, bring it to the city council for questions and comments prior to, uh, bringing a motion and closing the hearing, um, and then deliberation. So, okay, let's go ahead and start with this presentation from Pugh. Take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this, uh, presentation is for the project that is proposed at the southwest intersection of Stevens Creek Boulevard and, uh, Foothill Boulevard. The project site comprises of three parcels currently, and those three parcels are being proposed, uh, to be merged and then subdivided into nine parcels, uh, nine parcel subdivision with, um, nine townhomes slash row homes. Um, and, uh, essentially, um, well, yeah, let's go through that. Um, the- let's go through that. Um, the, uh, surrounding uses for this site are, uh, residential, primarily residential uses within office complex, uh, to the north of it, across Stevens Creek Boulevard, and a small commercial veterinary clinic, um, to the northeast, uh, and a gas station immediately east across South Foothill Bou- uh, Boulevard, and then residential uses, uh, surrounding it with a fire station directly adjacent on the west side, across from Camino Vista Drive. Um, the land use designation for this particular property is commercial residential. And the proposed zoning designation for this is zoning change involved with this, uh, uh, project as well, is to be planned development, um, zoning district with, uh, CG, uh, which is commercial uses and residential uses. The, uh, gross lot area for this particular, uh, uh, site is point seven-eight acres and after dedications, which are pretty significant along, um, Stevens Creek and South Foothill. Uh, the net lot area is about point six-three acres. The density allowed on the site is eleven, uh, sorry, fifteen dwelling units per acre, and the height allowed, um, by the general plan is thirty feet for this particular site. Um, once again, the development regulations, uh, because these are, this is a planned development zoning district, um, are flexible, and, um, uh, if they ha- if this had been a streamlined project, um, they would have to comply with the R3 zoning standards, however, uh, because they went into the discretionary review part of the, um, of the city's review, uh, they are proposing different standards, uh, for this. And I do have a table, uh, that indicates the, uh, different, uh, varying setbacks that they have proposed. Um, the setbacks range from eighty-one, um, feet, uh, all the way down to five feet, I believe. A- and of course, there's zero, uh, setbacks for some of the newly proposed buildings, uh, where there are attached row homes, um, of which, um, there are two. Um, there is, um, the onsite, there are going to be four buildings, um, with two triplex buildings, one duplex building, and one standalone, um, building at the corner of South Foothill and Stevens Creek Boulevard. There is surface parking provided. Each of the units does provide, uh, two enclosed parking spaces with one of the units, uh, with a tandem, uh, garage. And then, um, there is a common open space that is provided at the, uh, bottom, um, southwest corner of the property. Uh, the height that is proposed complies with the general plan. The proposed density is, um, quite a bit less than the general plan density. Um, as I mentioned, the setbacks range from, uh, five feet, seven inches to about eighty-two feet. Uh, the open space, which draws inspiration again from the heart of the city's specific plan, ranges from a hundred-and-fifteen square feet to six-hundred-and-thirty-nine square feet. Uh, the parking is, uh, code compliant at two-point-eight, uh, unit, uh, two-point-eight spaces per unit. The unit mix on the site is, um, uh, these units are fairly large. They're four-bedroom units. Um, they're essentially, um, uh, two-unit types that have four bedrooms each, and there is one unit, uh, which is a three-bedroom unit, which includes an ADU in it, for a total of nine units, not including the ADU. Uh, within this project, again, there are eight market rate units and one BMR, uh, unit at the moderate income level. In terms of site planning, uh, the site, uh, gains access from both Camino Vista through to South Foothill Boulevard. Um, the units are placed closer to the street to be further away from any of the adjacent residential uses. Um, it does scrape the existing commercial building on the site, and, um, there isn't, the rest of the site is pretty unimproved currently. They are proposing, um, some parallel parking along Stevens Creek Boulevard, and, uh, they are proposing, um, site in, uh, frontage improvements all along the, the site frontage. Um, they're proposing a detached sidewalk and, uh, a double row of trees, uh, which will shade that, uh, sidewalk that they are providing. Um, as far as the architectural design goes, again, it's a more modern building with, um, decks proposed to provide that, uh, private open space area for these units. Um, there is, um, also, uh, upgrade, uh, entry levels and, um, porches and stoops along the street, uh, which is encouraged, uh, in the general plan. There was environmental analysis conducted for this particular site. There were no significant impacts that were found, and there were mitigation measures that are proposed for air quality, biological resources, cultural and tribal resources, noise levels, geology and soils, and utilities. And again, uh, Terry McCracken is here, uh, to discuss any and all of those mitigation measures in further detail. I, I did want to take a moment to address, uh, general com- uh, plan compliance for this particular project. The project does further several of the, uh, general plan, uh, policies, strategies, and goals, um, including the ones that are listed here. Um, there i- there have been some community members that have been concerned of the lack of commercial space at this, uh, particular site. Uh, however, uh, the general plan policies about incorporating retailer-commercial, uh, space are permissive and not necessarily mandatory. Um, and then, uh, I did want to provide as background that the applicant did provide a preliminary plan with the live workspace and another plan with the commercial space, but cited many reasons for not wanting to build those, um, iterations of the projects, which included the, uh, added cost for parking, uh, the, um, the lack of, uh, surface parking provided for commercial space, the viability of the commercial space, the loss of the type of residential units, which were standalone residential units, rather than attached, um, uh, units, uh, up above, uh, that they wish to, uh, develop as deterrence to providing that, uh, that, that kind of a product. Uh, Economic Development Staff was, um, consulted at the time, and they agreed that because of the small size of this particular site and the very small commercial space that was being offered, it would not necessarily be a great viable, um, commercial space. And so in balance, um, uh, on balance, this, uh, particular, uh, proposed project is consistent with the general plan policies, or was found to be consistent with general pla- plan policies at the time of being this application complete. Uh, with regard to the public outreach and noticing, um, again, uh, there've been newspaper notices, uh, public hearing notices, mail to neighbors, and it's also been posted on the city's, uh, bulletin board and the website. With this particular application, I did want to clarify that no tree is being removed. Uh, however, the applicant is planting, uh, several trees around the property. Um, in terms of public comment, we received one, uh, public comment earlier, where one member of the public commented about, um, retaining commercial uses on the site, not adding any residential uses on the site, concerns about traffic, uh, and the existing traffic violations in the area, uh, about the rise in crime in the, in the area in general, and concerns about construction impacts. Uh, there've been, I think there's been one, at least one other comment that the city has received, which I think the clerk will read out later. Um, but the planning commission did, um, need to discuss this project. Uh, they discussed the lack of commercial space in the project. They discussed outreach. Um, they discussed the language about the preference versus the requirement of a mixed-use residential project, uh, due to the subjectivity of the language in the general plan. But they overall supported the four sale units that were proposed, and they recommended approval with a four-one-o vote, with, um, Chair Wong voting no. Uh, with that, staff concludes its presentation and recommends that the city council adopt, uh, the resolution to adopt the mitigated negative declaration, uh, introduce and conduct the first reading of the ordinance, and adopt the resolutions to approve this particular project, uh, with the, uh, updated, uh, desk item for attachment C, which is the development permit resolution that was provided earlier this evening. With that, I conclude my presentation. Happy to answer questions.
Okay, thank you, Pugh. Um, and then just kind of get that last part out of your boilerplate. So, we'll, we'll take the questions, uh, a little bit later from council. Um, but let me check back in with the applicant. Did you want, uh, John Thatch to add anything to what Pugh was stating, uh, in her presentation at this time?
I'd just like to add a few items. I want to thank Pugh and planning staff and public works for, and this has been a long process. We looked at a lot of different si- possibilities on the site. It is a very small site as far as what we can do, as far as shallow. And I think we've created something that has a, uh, an urban feel, has very pedestrian character, you know, with doors to, towards the streets, you know, front patios, and again, how we've done the landscape. And, and a big item, other item is as far as with our neighbors, uh, as mentioned previously, is, is a setback. We are setback thirty-plus feet, you know, from our neighbors as far as creating a cushion to, you know, existing single-family neighborhood. Uh, it's, it's been interesting for us to do, and again, a contemporary architecture, and, uh, again, varied as far as articulation. And something, you know, I think we worked hard with staff as far as coming up something that I think worked well, and I think would be a very positive for City of Cupertino. So, I mean, with that, I'd like to say thank you to everybody, and, uh, we're here for any questions, uh, that you may have, including, uh, Jamie Mattern, our project manager on the project. So, thank you.
You're welcome. And, uh, good to have you here, and, um, hopefully, um, we'll keep on engaging in a positive, uh, public process here. So, let me go on to, uh, the members of the public. Uh, as I stated at the beginning, uh, we'll go ahead and, uh, take the, uh, hands that are raised by the time that the first speaker gets done speaking. I see caller four-nine-two-seven is still here. That is, uh, Jennifer Furlong, if I'm remembering correctly from item one. We also have Jean Bedord with a hand raised at this time. You'll be provided three minutes. Uh, welcome, Jennifer, and, uh, you may begin.
Great, good evening. Thank you for remembering me, Mayor Paul. Um, once again, I'd like to ask that we be able to salvage the signage from, um, the mini-market liquor store that was there, the Beatty Brothers', um, store, um, because it is, is of historical significance, um, to us. And I have a little person here who would like to say, oh, he's too shy now. He wanted to say happy new year to council.
Happy new year.
Oh, okay, he did. He said it. So, that, that's all on behalf of the Cupertino Society and Museum, that we'd like to salvage the signage. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer, and thank you to your little guy as well. And so, um, we'll go on to Jean Bedord. And we don't have any, any other hands raised at this point from members of the public. And so, Jean, you'll be our second and last speaker. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and council members. My name is Jean Bedord, and I'm a longtime Cupertino resident. I'm here to urge you to approve this project. I live near this area. It's been an eyesore for the over thirty years that I've lived here. Uh, I commend the property owner for tackling this project. The small lot really does limit development, and the long overdue frontage and infrastructure are expensive. Over the years, with many councils, alternatives to the liquor store have been explored, but none of them were economically feasible. Doesn't Cupertino deserve a better gateway than a rundown liquor store and dirt parking lot? This is a residential area, and this project fits in well. Retail has never flourished along Foothill Bou- Boulevard. There's no foot traffic, and the adjoining businesses are a gas station with a mini-market and by appointment businesses. The work-life units half a mile away were built because a gas station. The most viable commercial business in that location couldn't survive. I applaud the innovative use of this property. Instead of a liquor store with late-night drunks and lowlife, it will be nine units of badly needed housing. The city needs more projects like this to make progress in meeting its arena numbers. I urge you to approve this project. Cupertino needs housing, not more vacant retail and commercial space. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. And we'll bring this back, uh, to the applicant as well as to staff.
Mayor?
Uh, I'm sorry?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is Kirsten.
Oh, I apologize, Madam City Clerk. So, um, Madam City Clerk, did you have any, um, communications from members of the public by email that you'd like to read into the record?
Yes, Mayor, I did just receive one from Andrew Wang. We are deeply disturbed by the contents of the two-two-six-nine-zero Stevens Creek Proposals Landscape Plan. The landscaping plan calls for nandina and lantana, whose deadly toxicity to wildlife were documented in our remarks on the canyon crossing proposal. Thus, we have the same concerns with the species in the two-two-six-nine-zero Stevens Creek proposal as well. The landscape plan for two-six-nine-zero, two-two-nine, two-two-six-nine-zero Stevens Creek also calls for pyrrhus cali- caleriana. In the wild, py- pyrrhus caleriana is found only in eastern Asia. We oppose the use of pyrrhus caleriana in the landscape planting plan. It is invasive in many parts of the United States, to the point where states from Ohio to South Carolina have outlawed its trade, and an odor that many people find unpleasant. As the banger Daily News puts it in this headline, "A tree that smells like rotting fish is so invasive that states are offering bounties to kill it." Furthermore, there is an alarming statistic, a mere six percent of the California's urban trees originate from California. Clearly, this urban design has not come without significant costs to our ecosystem. We must do everything we can to raise that number from six percent to one-hundred percent. Planting an additional pyrrhus does not help. We commend the landscape plan's inclusion of plants such as toyon, California fescue, and California gray rush. We invite the architects of two-two-six-nine-zero Stevens Creek to choose from the non-exhaustive list of California native plants to replace the proposed nandina and lantana, attached in written communications. We invite the architects to choose from the non-exhaustive list, uh, of California native species to replace the proposed pyrrhus attached in the written communications. We urge city council to halt the two-two-six-nine-zero Stevens Creek development proposal until these issues are addressed and resolved.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Okay, great. Uh, would anyone from the applicant or staff like to respond to any of the public comments? And John, I see your hand is raised. Did you want to speak to?
Yeah, I, I just had a couple things. As far as the landscape, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I failed to mention that. We got the, the letter, and we will work to alleviate those problems. You know, we, uh, can see those possibilities, and we will work with staff and to alleviate those, the three plants that have been mentioned. Uh, the other item I want to just maybe talk about the BMR. The BMR is a good-sized unit. It's really like one of the same units. It's seventeen-hundred square feet and four bedrooms, so it really blends in with all the other units. And, uh, and I got upsurfed by the, the little one. I also wanted to say happy new year to everybody. Thank you.
And, and on that note, John, um, that was, I, his mother was speaking to, as to the signage, uh, would you be willing to work with historical society on that as well?
Yes, that, that, I find, I think that's great. We'd love to help.
Great. Great to hear. Um, anybody from staff like to follow up on any of the items brought up by members of the public?
Uh, not at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great. Thank you, Pugh. Um, so let's go ahead and bring this to council. Uh, same as before, I, I might, you know, we're doing quite well on time, frankly, so, um, let, let me just go ahead and elevate that to five minutes of questions, um, since that's practically what we, you know, ended up around on the first item. I do see, uh, from our council, we have a couple of, uh, well, one hand raised from Councilmember Moore at this time. So, Councilmember Moore, why don't you kick us off with questions here?
Hey, sure. Thank you, Mayor Paul. And, uh, it's for the, our city attorney, uh, pretty much making, uh, the same statement as, for the previous project. So, when I, when I look at the general plan, I see the same asterisks for this project, same, uh, neighborhood, um, uh, commercial center designation. We have the same non-residential land use designation. Uh, the expectation, uh, seemed reasonable when this, uh, project came to the Environmental Review Committee, and there was, uh, an email from the public, uh, wanting to have, like, neighborhood gathering places. Um, that, that request seemed, uh, seemed reasonable, so I looked into the general plan, and it, it seemed as though that was, uh, uh, what the general plan was, uh, making as an expectation. Um, so I, I was a little bit surprised, a lot surprised, to see the project turn into all residential and have no commercial at all, especially given that this project and the one that we just, uh, approved down the street, um, have the same, uh, designations. And so, that, I, I found a really surprising, and, um, and here, I ended up learning about the Housing Accountability Act issue. So, um, I, I think it's interesting that, that staff, uh, said make, essentially, you know, put, uh, put retail, put a retail component further down the street, um, when this is at the crossroads. I think that's a, a curious, um, a curious outcome. But I would like to hear, uh, what, um, the Housing Accountability Act impact is on this particular project, and what does it do for our ability to approve or deny a project after the thirty days? Thank you.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I think, um, you know, you and, and Pugh have, I think, explained a lot of the key issues already, but I could kind of summarize them. Is, you know, there, 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 there are provisions in the general plan. Um, they are, um, uh, the language is, is not entirely clear, but they're not, um, necessarily mandatory provisions. They're entire, they're in, in, intended to allow flexibility. And so, there is, you know, the, the flexibility in that language contemplates that you will get different outcomes with different sites that have different characteristics. Um, and so, you know, in, in, in contrast to the project that we discussed earlier, here, there were some characteristics of the site, which I think, you know, Pugh did a good job of laying out, that led staff to determine that, um, this was not an appropriate site for retail. And because these are, are non-mandatory provisions of the general plan, there was a determinate, determination made that the project was consistent with the general plan at that time. You know, as, as you point out, um, you know, it's the general plan, you know, that, um, You know, as you point out, you know, the general plan, you know, that, under the Housing Accountability Act, you know, that determination is generally going to be made at the staff's level. And unless, you know, that criteria is identified at that time, there is a limited amount of time for the city to revisit the issue. And so, and so that is where we are with this project now.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. You have about a minute and a half left. Vice Mayor, did you want to ask any further questions at this point, Councilmember Moore? No? Okay. Vice Mayor Chow?
So the existing commercial space is about twenty-five hundred square feet. And then we are reducing that to zero. And I would like to try and understand, because what we are seeing here is eight units of four bedrooms each, and another unit is three bedroom plus ADU, so essentially four bedroom, two. So that's nine units of four bedrooms. That means we could have had nine units of three or two bedrooms, which will make this, the units more affordable, and then have some space for commercial. So why, I would like to know why was not, that not considered? Has staff suggested this throughout the process?
So staff did evaluate certain alternatives, that the preliminary alternatives that the applicant had provided, which included the live-work and the commercial, in a very small commercial space. But there were concerns about the viability of that space because of how small it would be. With regard to whether they could build smaller units, they could certainly build units that were all tandem, but the height limit on the site also limits how, how much they can go up in order to provide additional units. And the applicant was not interested in providing condo units or smaller units. They wanted, they wished to provide the product that they have proposed tonight.
Right. I'm asking, why can there be nine three-bedroom or two-bedroom units? That means they will be smaller, and then you will have extra parking that would be available for retail. And then, so why, I like the project that it has setback along Foothill and Stevens Creek, and that the setback with the landscaping, that's really nice for pedestrian, but there's no commercial. So, so why was not that viable alternative?
Sure. I could offer some background just on the requirements that the city has requirements for parking for each residential unit. And then additionally, there would be additional parking required for any commercial space. So because the site is so small, it's actually only six tenths of an acre. So the previous project, by example, was a lot larger. And so that was a larger site. It was able to use underground parking. In such a small site, and additionally, a large portion of the site, actually about twenty percent of the site, was given back to the city for public right-of-way improvements. So once you subtract that chunk of the site out, there's really not a lot left of the surface of the site. So there's really no space to add additional parking or commercial. So that was one of the significant.
If you reduce the unit size from four bedroom to three or two bedrooms, you would have reduced the number of parking needed for residential, which means the remaining of the parking could have been for commercial. You don't need to add extra parking. That's my question.
Yeah, and maybe Pew can add some more insight into that. But the, I think, two parking spaces per unit would still have been required, even if the units were a little bit smaller. So those garages are already there on, at the surface level. And so with the garages and a small loop road for emergency vehicle access behind the garages, there's not any more surface area left to put additional parking. There's a few guest spaces that are also required. So the guest parking spaces are required for the residential. So then you'd have to have even more parking required for commercial.
A minute left, Vice Mayor.
Okay, so another question is regarding the, the open space and private open space. So I see that it's complying with heart of the city. But yeah, I agree with Councilmember Moore. This is site, and the other site is, are not a part of the heart of the city. So if it's or not part of the city, what would have been the requirement for the open space?
That's a great question. We actually don't have standards for units outside of the heart of the city. Most development in Cupertino so far has been based on the planned development zoning district. There are some developments that, where the units themselves did not have any private space included, or very, very small balconies, which were less than sixty square feet included in them. So it's been pretty varied, depending on what the, you know, the city's appetite has been to approve on those projects.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Way?
Thank you, Mayor Paul. My question is about how thorough this project has been vetted. It looks like they have proposed something with a commercial, there's something different. So this is sort of like a third plan, and also there are deep research about whether economically the retail would survive or not. And then with the space that set out line against the existing neighborhood, that it's better to have, you know, this kind of outline. So my question is, does the staff believe that this project has been vetted in different forms? And so this probably is according to the staff's expertise and experience, this would be the best one that fits this small lot like that. That's my first question. My second question is, this is a really good project, and four bedrooms would bring families with kids into our neighborhood. And I do believe that, maybe staff can correct me if I'm wrong, that we are looking for, a lot of our complaints is that units are too small, only two bedrooms. You can't bring kids, you can't bring families. And so this kind of development probably suits what we need in Cupertino and fits into our neighborhood requirements. So these are my two questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Way, and through Mr. Mayor, if I may, just kick off at least with the first question, responding to the first question, similar to my response to the last project. We bring projects forward that's been thoroughly vetted and evaluated. As we see from the staff report, their number of general plan goals are reviewed. I think the challenge in the site, obviously, is the size comparison to the previous site. I think it's more than half the size. But yes, it's been properly vetted and reviewed.
All right. My second question is about whether this four-bedroom fits into what we need, you know, for families. And we are sort of lacking a bigger four-bedroom units. But the other project looks like all three-bedroom, right? Three-bedroom and two-bedroom.
That's correct. Yeah, the other project was all three-bedroom. This is all four-bedrooms, and it's not really the kind of model that we have very much of in Cupertino. And I think it's also one that developer felt like, through their market study, is something that's desirable for the community.
Thank you, Ben.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Way. Next we have Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, so, good presentation. I think the overall appearance is, is pretty good, especially with the setbacks. And I, too, would, I believe the three bedrooms, even if it's more units, which is a benefit, houses in Cupertino are being replaced continually. And they all get replaced with four, five, or six bedrooms. So although we can say, gee whiz, four-bedroom townhouse condominium, well, yeah, it's definitely got a market. There's no question about it. But for those families that want four or more bedrooms, that's what's being put up. Every place, something is torn down. What we have is a lot of people that would like to move to Cupertino and affordability. And that price goes up dramatically with the added bedrooms. And so I see that as working against the affordability that we're trying to promote. We have this continual onslaught that we're not building enough housing, and we're not building enough affordable. Cupertino is not affordable. But here we are promoting, you know, the biggest townhouse-style housing as opposed to like the other project, which is three-bedroom. I just want to kind of put that out there. Going back to my question to the city attorney before, and can we further define the general plan, the MUNI code, about these BMR units, dispersion, size, getting them defined before the approval process such that, when we're here tonight and we hear that, well, the thirty day expired, and so there's nothing that we can do, if the developer says that this is the project that he wants, and it's not going to conform, fine. And it comes to us, would we be able to, if it was important to the community, would we be able to enforce that, hey, that corner section? I have the picture on my screen there. And when you go to a very busy intersection like that, the corner unit gets the big visibility, whether it's going to be a FedEx or something that everybody's going to see. We would at least, or I'm asking, would we be able to say, hey, for the community, this is what we need for your project? And we might very well wind up saying, okay, we hear the pros and cons. We're going to approve as proposed. But I just feel we should somehow find a way, and again, it's back to the city attorney, can we get that flexibility by making it a objective standard?
So is, if I understand the question correctly, you're suggesting that you would like more visibility into the designation of affordable units when projects come to council? Is that a fair understanding of your question, Councilmember?
No, this last question is pretty much, you know, the retail requirement that has flexible language and cannot be enforced, as I'm hearing previously. And what I would like is to have the community's ability to, to make that a requirement if it's important at that time. I'm not saying it's that important to this project, but once again, I'm hearing that the boat has already sailed. The water has gone under the bridge. In no way, shape, or form could we enforce that type of requirement?
Yeah, so, so thank you for clarifying your questions. Yes, so, given the requirements of state housing law, having clear and objective standards in the general plan or the zoning ordinance is the best way to ensure, you know, specific policy preferences are enacted with respect to a specific parcel. You know, that's going to most clearly communicate the policy preferences and also insulate the city from legal challenges, you know, if there were any guarantees from that.
Okay, I'll go right into my questions. You know, John, your five minutes seem very fast, but it elapsed. I started my own clock. So I'll just segue into the questions that I have. So nine units, fifteen percent of that is one point three five. We're getting one unit of BMR. What happens to the remaining point three five is my question?
The remaining point three five is feet out.
All right, how much is that?
I can calculate that in just a second.
Okay. All right, and as you're calculating that, Pew, my second question has to do with the transportation equation, similar to what my questions were for item one. Has there been something done with regard to the design of the project to account for the possibility of drop-off, pickup, delivery, et cetera, for the new type of transit that we're seeing emerge? Any cutout on the curb, any parking space designated?
There isn't anything, any cutouts or any parking space designated. However, there is parallel parking proposed along Stevens Creek Boulevard that could be used for drop-offs, that is public parking. So, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I do want people to start thinking about that earlier rather than later. And then the other part of it, and I encompass this in my comments, you know, in the last item, so I just want to ask a question about it. Is there anything being done to help prepare these units, especially for this unit, right? This project, because the parking spaces are really kind of tied to the units themselves for plug-in vehicles, mainly the two-hundred-and-forty-volt types of, you know, charging outlets that are useful. Because I think the more that we can kind of diminish the, you know, the barriers of entry, the better it will be for this, you know, type of future. John, you have your hand raised? Unmute yourself, John, though.
The homes will be wired for it. Again, and I'm not sure exactly how many we will, to the developer, how many we actually install, but they will be wired, part of the code that we have to do today.
Okay, great. And then Pew, quick check-in. Did you do that calculation yet for the point three five? Oh, you're muted as well. I'm sorry.
I'm working on that. I have a rough number.
I have one more question, so you can go ahead and keep working on that. My other question had to do with the two, you know, open spaces, so to speak. One on the corner of Fiddle and Stevens Creek, and the other one is kind of a tucked away, I guess, a bit of a parklet, if you will. Are those accessible to the public, or are they cordoned off in any way from the rest of the public?
They are not cordoned off, but there is no public easement over that area, is my understanding.
Over either area or for both areas?
Chad, do you have a response to that one?
There's no public access for either area. The courtyard in the back is more of an outdoor area for the residents. And that area at the corner, as much as it looks like open space, is actually the low point of the site. And that is where the stormwater treatment facilities are being installed that are necessary per the municipal regional permits.
What is going to be the barrier between the public on the sidewalk in that area, Chad?
Between the sidewalk and the street, you mean?
Yeah, no, between the sidewalk and the corner of Stevens Creek and Foothill. The area we were just describing, that's lower than the rest of the development. So you're saying the public can't use that. You're looking at kind of like a 2D map from the top, and it looks kind of green, right? So how will the public be separated from that corner?
So that, so basically the sidewalks where the public access is, and the green section that you're indicating is actually a stormwater treatment facility. It's going to be a bioretention area. There's going to be vegetation landscaping. And it's going to be a slightly recessed area that will treat stormwater from the side.
What you're saying is it just won't be inviting to the public to, you know, go in. It just really is not that usable for any particular public purpose. Is that what you're saying?
Correct. It's not really usable for even private purposes. It's strictly for stormwater treatment.
Okay, all right. Is it going to be physically separated from, you know, the sidewalk? Or is it just, you know, just the way that it's designed, it doesn't?
Yeah, based on the landscape plans, there may be some low shrubs in that area that will separate that bioretention area from the sidewalk.
I see, I see. Okay. And just to confirm, the other portion is completely inaccessible to the public, right? The, kind of the green space to be used by the residents?
That is correct. There is no public access being proposed to that area.
Is the applicant?
I could offer that it's not fenced off, so it could be used by people walking by. But there's no limitation on them using it, and there is a walkway between the two triplex buildings that could offer access to that back area. So it's, it could be used either way.
Okay, I mean, it could be. Is there any appetite for an easement possibly to formalize that public access?
We could check with the developer himself to see about that. There's already been a significant portion of the lot, as I sort of mentioned earlier, that was dedicated for the bicycle lane improvements and the other curbside improvements. So there's already a lot of that consideration being given to the public and improving that public sidewalk. But we could check with the.
I'm sorry, would that be John, the developer?
No, the developer is Ali Masafar. He's on the call as well, but.
Oh, oh, hi, Ali. I see your, or John, you have your mic.
I think I can answer. I mean, it's probably a lot, I would say no. I mean, as far as right now, it becomes a concern of council. I think we could look at it. But it's a liability concern as far as it's really intended for the residents. But I think if it's a real concern about, from the council, I think we could probably, we could take a look at it. But again, the way it is and the way it's situated, it is. But again, the way it is and the way it's situated, it is really meant for the residents.
Okay, fair enough, let me go back to Pugh to answer that last question. Pugh, I also have a question now, though, about the park mitigation fee. Anyone who exists for this, yes, so.
So my estimate on what that 0.35 would come out to is approximately $18,006, but that's an estimate. That's based on the average unit size that is being proposed.
Okay, I'm going to have a follow up on that. $18,000 for 0.35 Cupertino four bedroom, that seems pretty generous, you know. So what about the park mitigation fees, that listed anywhere in Stafford's report?
It is in the attachment, the desk item that was provided for this item. It is in the, oh gosh. I have it here. It is $480,000 for this particular project, that is the estimated fees right now.
Okay, 480, okay. Okay, Councilmember Moore, your hand is raised, and then Vice Mayor Chow.
Hey, thank you, Mayor Paul. I do want to bring up the municipal code 19.148, the site art and the location needing to be shown according to that code. For this particular project, I think it also needed a general plan amendment and given perhaps an extra floor without reducing and even potentially increasing the number of units which they have right now. And I think you could do that and maintain very easily the 2,500 square feet of retail on the site. So I am kind of curious if that's something that would still be within the Housing Accountability Act because you wouldn't be reducing the density. So if maybe our city attorney could respond to that.
So there's two separate provisions of the Housing Accountability Act that I think are at issue here. One is there is a provision that prevents projects that are compliant with applicable objective standards, it prevents the council from disapproving a project or approving it at a reduced density unless certain specific and narrow findings are made. There's a separate provision in the Housing Accountability Act that requires within 30 to 60 days, depending on the size of the project, that the city identify any inconsistencies between applicable objective standards and the project proposed by the applicant. And if those inconsistencies aren't identified, or if there's a determination made that the project is consistent at the time, which is what happened here, then the city essentially waives its right to revisit that issue later. So and that's the second provision that's at issue here.
Okay, so even if we wanted to give an extra story, staff tied our hands and made it so we're essentially, the ship sailed and we're stuck with what we have, and no changes. Okay, I understand it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. So we're pretty much out of time here, except for Councilmember Way, with about two and a half minutes remaining. You know, maybe we could, Councilmember Way, could we move that over to Vice Mayor Chow and Councilmember Willie?
That's easy.
Okay, let's go with Vice Mayor Chow and then Councilmember Willie.
Okay, thank you. Two questions, first is, with, the current zoning is RCG with our residential. So in terms of compliance, it's that if we rezone to RCG rest, we don't need a general plan amendment because this rezoning is compliant with the general plan. However, if we don't have the rezoning, the current project as proposed does not comply with the zoning, the current zoning. Is that right?
I will let City Attorney Jensen answer that question.
So, yes, that's correct.
So it doesn't comply with the current zoning?
That's correct, the project is inconsistent with current zoning, and the applicant has requested a rezoning.
We can say complies, it doesn't comply with.
Well, so, there's a third provision in the Housing Accountability Act that states that if a project is consistent with the general plan but inconsistent with zoning, as is the case here, then the general plan designation control. So the applicant is seeking a zoning ordinance amendment here, but the lack of consistency with zoning would not be a basis for denying approval of the project.
But I thought the zoning map is part of the, I do remember our general plan included zoning map. So zoning map should be part of the general plan. If it doesn't comply with the zoning map, it doesn't comply with the general plan. Although the description in the text is vague, but the project should comply with the zoning map.
So the zoning ordinance and general plan are two separate legal requirements. You know, and there does have to be conformity. This Housing Accountability Act provision is kind of an exception to that conformity requirement that requires the city to apply the general plan standard if there's an inconsistency with the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
Let me go over the.
Second question is regarding the unit.
Hold that question, I'll give you some time later, but let me go to Councilmember Willie at this point, where we add some time to the questions. Councilmember Willie?
Yeah, maybe we can throw back up the top view. Am I correct, though, that this corner is the corner that historically we've heard of it being a safety problem because of the Lehigh truck traffic at that corner? And if so, it seems to me that when we look at the top view or the artist's rendering, it's not showing the corner of concern. And it appears that there's not as much attention to this safety. You know, people on bicycles seldom move their bicycles up on the sidewalk. When they're getting ready to cross, they roll up to the corner. So answer the first question, is this the intersection that we've previously been made aware of safety problems from the Lehigh truck traffic?
Chad?
Councilmember Willie, I think I can answer that. There is a significant amount of Lehigh and Stevens Creek quarry truck traffic that goes through this intersection, so hopefully that answers your question there.
So then when we look at the top view, I have it on, kind of on my screen, I'd rather let staff pull up the top view.
I think you'll want to look at page C3.
We've got it. And I think the safety concern is the right front corner there, which shows not nearly as much room for the people as opposed to the left front. Am I correct that the truck traffic is primarily focused turning around the right corner there?
That is correct, and what I do want to state with this corner alignment is we are providing a little more turning room for trucks in this area. And, you know, the existing curb alignment is being pulled back a little bit to facilitate that movement. This is not necessarily the best sheet to be looking at for what the furniture improvements are. If you look at sheet C3.0 of the plan package, that will show that there are, that the project's proposing to install bike lanes along Stevens Creek Boulevard as well as Foothill along the project frontage to better differentiate bike lanes from vehicle lanes. And again, that corner is being pulled back to provide a little more, a little easier movement for trucks, it's not quite as pinched as it was previously. The bike lanes are being widened and the sidewalks kind of offset from that corner where trucks are turning.
So I'll just leave it that, you know, I just hope, you know, there is enough attention to the safety aspect. Definitely, the well-defined curb should definitely make the drivers of those trucks more aware of where they have to stay out of as opposed to what we have now. But still, when you have people on bicycles that stop at the corner because they're going to cross, how often are they going to be picking their bicycle up off the street and into the sidewalk? And are those trucks going to respect that those are, you know, people there? We're now adding nine families to that corner and, you know, making sure that we don't wind up with with a very unfortunate episode that happens there. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Willie, and John, did you want to follow up? You have your hand up.
Yeah, just really quick, I mean, we've given about 10% of the site to make that corner better as far as if you looked at some of the earlier drawings, the engineers' drawings as far as making that corner work better. We've also set back the architecture at that corner even more to give better visibility at that corner to create safety, because we want it to be safety. I'm a big bike rider everywhere, so it's a big concern of mine about what to do about that. And I think we've done quite a few things there, including, you know, losing property to make it work better.
Okay, thanks very much. Yep, great, thanks very much. So we'll go back to council and, you know, it doesn't seem to me that we're really exhausting the questions quite yet, so let me go ahead and bring it back to Vice Mayor Chow. Vice Mayor Chow, I'm giving up another three minutes for each council. I don't think we'll need to use all of it, you know, frankly, but why don't you go ahead and start up with the question that you wanted to ask?
Thank you so much, Mayor. So I find, so this is the unit size for this project. On this third column, floor area, you can see that the unit size ranges from 2,200 to 3,000, and most of them, I think, oh, I think seven of them are 2,900 or more. These are really large units, bigger than a lot of, maybe most of the single-family homes in the Cupertino. These are not really providing affordable, I mean, even moderately, moderate, medium-sized. Why do they have to be so big? If you knock off even 1,000 square foot from each unit, you come up with 9,000 square foot extra floor area. So why do we need huge townhomes in this location?
I could offer a clarification that that floor area calculation follows the city's guidelines, and that includes the garages, so that's at least 400, and sometimes more, 450 square feet per unit, that is not actually livable square footage.
Oh, okay, so.
So if there's other pages you could look at to see the sizes of each unit. So that would be, let me find that. Sheet A1.05.
Still on the large side, though.
So Sheet A1.05, the total living space of that unit one is 2,502 square feet. Unit two is 1,764 square feet, and unit three is the 3,000 square feet. And that includes a junior ADU of 470 square feet.
So they are still on the large side, right, for a townhome especially? That makes them less affordable for Cupertino. So is it possible to provide smaller units? And even if it's all residential, smaller units means we could have more units and more affordable?
It's, I think like Jamie talked before, doing more units because of parking requirements and everything else is still very difficult. And say, once we, as far as how these units go up, and again, being efficient, some of that's, you know, we get probably more efficient as far as how the square footages work. But the big item is how parking works and parking requirements that the city requires in making how the units work and getting more units.
Yeah, that's three minutes.
How about smaller units but not increasing the size? Not extra units, but just smaller units?
It's, be honest, it's tough to do that, because once you do that, you start, you still have kitchens, you still have the bathrooms, you still have expensive spaces. So again, as far as efficiency, you know, going a little bit larger is actually better as far as construction costs overall.
Yeah, let's go on to the Councilmember Moore. Thank you, Councilmember Moore.
Okay, thank you for pointing out the floor plan for that particular unit that you were looking at. I'm looking at A1.07, and it's saying the deck is 473 square feet. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. There is a deck on that corner of the third floor.
On the, on the third floor? Huh.
It is something we are doing more on homes as far as the open space in projects or units like this, that they have better open space at the upper levels. So it is something we are doing quite a bit more of, including roof terraces, which again, your building height doesn't allow in this case. But we are putting larger spaces up higher and getting more towards the blue sky. It also articulates the architecture more by doing that.
Okay, so I'm seeing the outdoor kitchen, it looks like a living room outfitted there, roof deck, and when I look at the third floor, I believe this is the roofing diagram, it's covered as well, so essentially, I believe it's covered.
Yes, it is, it's basically, you know, it's still open on two sides as far as how it works, but the idea is really creating a nice outdoor patio or nice outdoor space for the resident of that unit.
Oh, definitely it is, but I just want to point that out and mention it to my fellow council members that this is a way that you can really maximize how much square footage you have without having it actually count as square footage. And so having a deck that's 473 square feet on, I guess this is the third level, it's hard to see. Yeah, 473 square feet and a porch of 166. That's it, I think we've been saying that we need to talk about this, and we haven't been, and it makes a significant difference for the square footage of a project when decks of this enormous size are being allowed. And it's got an outdoor kitchen as well, so it's going to have plumbing and other fixtures out there. So essentially, you're using your outdoor space, and it's really adding to your living space internally for the house. Okay, that's all I wanted to point out, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. Let's go to Councilmember Way, and Councilmember Moore, your three minutes is basically up, about another half minute left.
Thank you for, Councilmember Moore, for pointing that out. You know, just my personal point of view, I do appreciate outdoor deck, and I think it's, you know, modern living, it is, to me, it's a variety of living spaces we offer to our residents. This is one unit out of nine, so I actually personally think a different design, different space, is okay, and this deck is not looking into anybody's backyard, it's in a busy street. So to me, I appreciate that point, and that, but I also think I can see why this is being added to, you know, add to amenity to a particular one unit. So I don't see any, you know, any wrongs with it, but it may be a little different. Yeah, so it's good to know that it is a different unit. And this one unit is the one that has the ADU, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, because it's a corner, it has a bigger lot, so it does have that one ADU. Yeah, because it's a corner, it has a bigger lot. So it does have that one ADU in there. So, so I'm, I'm just, my comment is this is really a good project. And it's adds to our housing inventory and it's single-family homes that can accommodate families. And I, I do think this is a really good, well-thought-of project after a couple of rounds of other proposals. And I do think, appreciate our, appreciate our staff looking real closely. And then, you know, work with the developers to, or the owner to really develop something that fits into our residential neighborhood, which is pretty typical Cupertino. So I am, I believe this is a really good project.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Way. Let's go ahead and bring it back over to, I see Vice Mayor Chow and Councilmember Moore still have their, their hands raised at this point. So let me do a quick time check here. Councilmember Way, you, you actually hadn't concluded your five minutes originally. That's done now. And then I, I have time left on this round. So let, let me just ask a quick question of the applicant and then give my remaining time over to you and Vice Mayor Chow. So, so the BMR calculation on the .35 units is, is a bit low. You know, the 18,000 is, is fairly low compared to the one unit of, you know, a four-bedroom house that you're putting over. I, I believe that's, is that moderate? Or what's the classification of BMR?
In this case, it is moderate.
It is moderate, okay. So just for the sake of, you know, garnering the support, you know, I realize that you're reluctant to put the open space over. But would you be willing to work with our staff to come up with a, a more accurate market value of .35 and provide that payment as opposed to the square footage payment? Because $20 a square foot, you know, is, you know, it's just, it's nominal compared to the actual, you know, roughly third value of a BMR unit. So I, I think if you'd be willing to do that, I could put my support behind, behind this. Is that, is there, is that a willingness that you're willing to engage in that conversation with our staff? We don't have to make that conversation this evening.
I, that's a good question. I'm, I'm not sure exactly what that means. You know, that's the problem at this point until, say, you start drawing on paper what that means. I think the one thing that we looked at doing was the idea that we're creating a four-bedroom affordable unit, which is, is, to me, is uncommon for some of the things that you're, you're talking about.
Sure. Okay, well, let me, let me do it this way. So very roughly speaking, what do, what do you expect the market value of a four-bedroom unit like this to be, you know, currently in Cupertino? Are you thinking 2 million, 3 million, something like that? I mean, what's, you know?
I, I imagine it'd be in that category, yes.
Okay, so, let's, okay, let's, for the sake of this exercise, take the two. Moderate is what, 80% of area median income? Is that correct?
Right.
Okay, 80%. So if you're going to be taking a delta there, let's say 20% of the 2 million is $400,000. Okay, so you take 35% of that and you're getting 35,000 multiplied by, by four. So just very rough back-of-the-napkin calculation, 140,000 versus something like the 18,000? Would that be, and I'm just trying to get a little bit more of a commensurate value because you guys are asking for something, right? And we can get something perhaps for a BMR fund. So i- is that something that would be, you know, plausible?
That's something that the client's going to have to answer. So, Ali, you want to, you want to answer that? Or have any thoughts?
I mean, that's a very ballpark number, but I mean, I, I think it would be something along those lines.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi. This is Ali Mosafary. I'm the developer.
Yes.
And, okay, just, just to give, to give you some ideas. The city is making us to spend close to $2 million on off-site improvements, including new traffic light, new city light. And, you know, those are the responsibility of the city. So now you're asking us if we can contribute more, which I'm glad I will, I will do it. But, but is it fair?
Well, I mean, I think at the end of the day, I will answer your question. I, I believe it is fair because this is a bit of a deviation from what we would expect given our requirements. And so I, I, I think, let's not use the word fair. I think it's, it's communal in the sense that you would be helping us, you know, kind of remedy what is a bit of a gap in our BMR requirements that I'd like to see get fixed. And basically what it is, is when you have a fraction and that fraction is less than .5, you're automatically reverting to the per-square-footage fee, which in this case is $20 per square foot, which is a lot less than what we're getting in terms of BMR value. And at the end of the day, all this housing, all of these housing requirements are about affordability and trying to put a little bit more into our efforts to make things more affordable for people that need the housing. So if I'm hearing you right, I'm very appreciative of that willingness. I'm very appreciative of the willingness to put in the couple of million dollars for the improvements. I mean, for me, I think it's very obvious when you look at the Beto Brothers site right now that, you know, this is going to be a much better use, right? I mean, than an empty plot that often gets, you know, and I, you know, we're going to do infrastructure, you know, improvements to it. So, well, thank you. Thank you very much. I mean, that's essentially, you know, what I think is what's needed at this point.
No, I mean, the, the city has some rules how to calculate on other projects, the fraction of the BMR, correct?
That is correct, yes.
So if you're trying to, are you, are you trying to change it or is it just on one this project?
No, no, I'm, I'm trying to ask in exchange for, you're asking us to, you know, give the approvals here because of the fact that there are some changes, right, from those rules in other areas? Because now, now we are in the middle of that discussion. Otherwise, we wouldn't be, if you had an outright entitlement, we wouldn't be having this discussion, right? We would have to, you know, you would have a cause of action if we, if we denied and you had that by right. So, so I, I appreciate that willingness. And if that number seems to be, you know, within a ballpark, then, you know, I'll at least try to propose it to, to the council. So.
I'll leave it up to you to decide. Whatever you decide, I'll go for it.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mosafary. All right, Vice Mayor Chow and Councilmember Moore, you have your hands raised. Follow-ups. I, forgive me, I don't know what the order was, but I see the line above on Vice Mayor Chow. So I'll call on you first, Liam.
So here is the picture. You can see the deck. They are covered. So essentially, so these are the deck we are talking about. That means they are covered. That means they could become a room with the top covered and they are not counted in square footage. Is that right?
Well, I'll point out that, or Pugh can answer. Go ahead.
There is a condition, well, not a condition of approval, but the zoning does require that if they would, if they convert any of these spaces, they would have to go back through rezoning. But, and so essentially, they cannot convert any of these spaces to be enclosed spaces.
Oh, so they cannot?
No, because these are private open space requirements of the zoning.
Okay. And then are there any of these kind of deck on, on the, the site that's bordering the neighborhood?
I do not believe that there are any decks that border the residences.
So these are all facing a foothill or Stevens Creek, right?
Correct.
Okay, and so the project, basically the project does not comply with the current zoning. We are, we, the only way it's complying is only because of the state bill. That same project don't have to comply with local zoning. And they only need to comply with general plan, which usually is vague. And in this case, it's vague to the point that they don't have to comply. Is that right?
So, so I wouldn't phrase it quite that generally. There, particularly, in particular, the land use is not consistent with current zoning. And, but it is consistent, the proposed land use is consistent with the general plan. There are other, there are development standards and other requirements in the zoning ordinance that the project is still required to comply with.
But so the city will be losing like 1,500 or 2,500 square foot of commercial space. Yeah, it will be more costly to construct those. The developer will be saving dollars by not complying completely to the current zoning. And now they are trying to maximize profit by maximizing the size of each unit, which is beyond the most, the size of most townhomes, that's even four-bedroom. And then they are maximizing the size by adding pretty large deck two to, again, increase the value. And now the city is really asking, okay, what are you giving back to the city? We are losing commercial space, sales tax, and the public access to the site right now. So what are we getting back? I think that's, yeah.
Okay, you, you know, I know that wasn't a rhetorical question, but not, not having anything forthcoming from, from staff of the applicant. I, I think perhaps that's, you know, a topic for deliberation. So let's go to Councilmember Moore at this point. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I was wondering if the Vice Mayor could, I believe you were the person screen sharing and you showed the decks. If you could share that one more time, I would appreciate that. Okay, great, thank you. So my concern, and it's something that I really, I, I think it looks great in this, this image, in the graphic, and that's the railing that you have. However, when I think about the fact that that corner unit has the almost 500-square-foot deck which you're showing with outdoor furniture, outdoor kitchen, I really don't personally look forward to seeing someone's outdoor kitchen and furniture and people and stuff out on this railing with it being open because it's an open railing that you're showing here, which is not opaque. It is on the third floor. And for me, if it were solid or opaque in some way, whether it was glass to match the other, what you're showing for the, for the other glass on the first and second floor, that could work. But I, I do not want to see what I'm going to deem clutter, especially since it's a corner unit and people are going to be coming at it from multiple directions to look at it. So what can be done so that that doesn't happen? And then, and then second, just a quick question is how many square feet is this final project, including the deck areas since they are covered?
For the railing, that is a metal panel with slight, very slight perforations in it. So the exact, and that can be custom-made, so the exact pattern of those perforations can be selected. That's not finalized. So we can consider a panel that is much more solid than open to provide more privacy for screening those views.
Yeah, yeah. We can work with staff on that. I don't know, Jamie, if you have the total square footage of, or if you, if you have that.
I can provide that. It's 21,609 square feet, including all garages, all FAR on the.
Yeah, garage, so it includes garages, stairs, a lot of things that aren't just the living space.
Okay, so we're going from around 2,500 to over 20,000. Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Moore. I don't have further hands raised. And so well, okay, now, Councilmember Moore, you have a hand raised. Did you want to ask a follow-up question at this time or?
Yes, how can, how can we ensure that we don't have visual blight from however people keep their outdoor decks? Because I've seen places where people load them up with yard, yard furniture, lots of things. It doesn't look very attractive. They maybe don't have a flair for, for that outdoor decorating space. What, what can be done that actually nails it down so that we don't end up having something that takes away from the rest of the architectural features of the project by, you know, rent, owners that maybe aren't, aren't very careful about what they do with that space?
I think again, a project like this, you know, we will have an HOA. I think again, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's going to be a very nice project. And again, the HOA as far as controlling that. And I think what Jamie said and what you talked about, I think we want to have a nice rail. But again, I understand what you're talking about, that we can look at something that's pretty not transparent, but it has, it still has a nice detail to it. So I think we can work with staff to do that. And I think, you know, put strong things in there with the HOA about requirements in the deck and visibility. And I think the way we've done the kitchens and things like that, they're back against the wall. They're not on the outside edge. They're, you know, tucked back in. And I think also the roof element, I think helps, you know, control that also as far as creating a frame, as far as how the spaces work.
Thank you. And Pugh, is there something that you feel like you, you're able to do, working with the, working with the applicant to ensure this?
I did want to point out that the city's municipal code in Chapter 1922, which is property maintenance, does have requirements about having unsightly things that are placed that are visible from the public right of way that could be utilized. However, we would hope that there would be strong language in the CCNRs for the HOA to disallow, I guess, clutter in that, in the private open space visible from the public right of way.
Okay, and there, and I'm particularly concerned about that corner unit that we're all going to be, you know, facing there. If there's something to have it lubored or, you know, to really, and, and the people living there are probably going to want some privacy and not feel like everybody driving by is looking at them when they, when they use the deck space as well.
And I think we can, the architect can come up with good solutions for that in terms of the kind of perforation or the, the amount of perforation that they use for that. But we do want something that's lighter on the higher floors because if they were to put a completely solid wall there, the building will look a lot heavier.
True. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and suggest a motion as, as recommended by staff with two modifications. With regard to the BMR fee component, staff is directed to calculate the added economic value of .35 of the moderate unit provided by the applicant. And applicant will contribute that additional amount to the city's BMR fund less the square footage impact fee that has been calculated. And then with regard to visibility of the decks and patios, staff will take direction from council and work with applicant as discussed to ensure that the aesthetic integrity of the project is preserved. So those are my takeaways from our discussion here. And let me check the recommended action very briefly. So resolution, and there is an ordinance tied to this as well. And so that would be part of my motion, of course. And then we would need a first reading from our city clerk on that ordinance as well. Councilmember Moore, did you want to make a comment? Or actually, let me go to our staff member with her hand raised. Pugh, did you have a comment on this?
I, I have a clarifying question, Mr. Mayor. Sorry for the interruption. But you mentioned something about a discount for the fee that's calculated. And I just wanted to be sure that you wanted to provide a discount or was that just to account for what we have in the resolution currently?
Yeah, no, just hypothetically speaking, if the number ends up being 150,000 and you calculated 18,000, they would be putting 150 in the BMR fund, except the additional amount of 132, right? Because you're already calculating.
The total amount they'll put in is 150 still.
Yeah, I just want to keep us legally correct to make sure that we're charging the square footage fee, you know, per our manual, but that the applicant is agreeing to add that extra amount per your calculation or per staff's calculation based upon the parameters I'm describing here. And, and I'll just, you know, in an effort to be really transparent about it, I mean, my, I, I think there's a gap that exists for this fraction. Okay, so the rule is that if you get to 1.5, you round up and you give us another unit. But if it's under 1.5, if it's under .5, what ends up happening is you pay $20 a square foot. And, and you know, everyone knows that 20, $20 a square foot just doesn't get anywhere near the economic value of a BMR unit, whether it's moderate or very low income. And so I, I'm just trying to, you know, equilibrate that. And I realize that, you know, in order to fix our ordinance on this, we're going to have to, you know, do some work. But I think this is a great vanguard and example. And I thank the applicant. I thank staff. uh, staff. I, but, but especially I thank the applicant for being willing to, you know, provide this because I, I think it just gives us a great, you know, what kind of leading example um, of how we'll go about, you know, fixing this. Um, so is that clear enough, Pew? I mean, basically based on that calculation, they've already paid, they're already required to pay that square footage portion.
I understand. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, great. Thanks very much. Councilmember Moore, did you have a, uh, okay. So let me clarify the process. I've put a motion uh, on the table. Uh, before I close the hearing, uh, before I, you know, ask for the second, clean up all your questions. If you have any, you know, follow-up final questions, and then I'll take a second, um, you know, and then close the hearing. Um, so Councilmember Moore, did you have any further questions at this point?
No, I was trying to second.
Okay. Let me ask the rest of council. Are there any further questions on this item uh, before I close? Vice Mayor Chow?
Oh, one more question. So we know that there is a thirty day shot clock. We need to identify non-compliance. But for this case, it doesn't comply with the zoning. So what is the staff supposed to do? And do they, do they have to uh, flag that this doesn't comply with the zoning before the thirty days? Or, 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 or are we then are forced to approve any zoning request, any rezoning request?
Okay. I, I think Chris probably wants to, you know, speak to that as the city attorney. The, the thirty day shot, no.
Yeah. So the, so I, I believe this project was um, framed as, as, as a request for a zoning ordinance modification fairly early. And so it was never, and, and the applicant never contested that. So it never became an issue as to whether, you know, a zoning ordinance change, modification would be required or not. And, and Pew can, can correct me if I have any of the history incorrect.
That is not, that is correct.
Any follow-ups? Vice Mayor Chow?
Yeah.
At this point. Okay. Uh, and Councilmember Moore, your hand is still raised. Is that still for the second? Or did you have any final question to ask?
Uh, well, I, I, I still don't believe that it is following the general plan. And I, you know, it's open to interpretation, but it is, has the asterix showing that it's a neighborhood um, commercial center, has the non-residential land use designation, which has its, has a definition for that. Um, and so I, I have felt all along that this needed a general plan amendment. Um, and then I wondered if you, uh, staying within the Housing Accountability Act, if you couldn't, uh, like I mentioned earlier, give, give them an extra floor, um, so that the commercial um, would be maintained. And I, I think we, we need to clean up our, our general plan so this stops happening. Um, you know, this is, this is going on too many times. And, and like, also I said, you can take the other project down the street. They have a commercial component. We don't have a commercial component on this particular project. So we're being inconsistent. And um, and I'm not sure the rationale for that inconsistency is adequate. So, but I would like to do the second.
Okay, great. So noted, Councilmember Moore, uh, and, and thank you for that uh, final question. Let, let me just clean that up very briefly with staff. Uh, you know, obviously this is a process. Everything uh, that we conduct in the public uh, arena is a process. Um, you know, I think we're rightly pointing out some, some issues and that's just the nature of, of, of how we work. And um, I, I think it works well. Uh, let, let me just ask anyone from staff, uh, on this guidance, do you feel sufficiently um, sufficiently guided, so to speak, such that we could do the follow-ups to clean up the concerns that have been expressed uh, by council and the public with regard to the process?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Mr. Mayor, benefit for charge community government. We, we hear you loud and clear, and we will be working with city attorney's office, well, the city manager, and, and looking for ways to, to clean this up, uh, to, to council satisfaction. So, so that future projects uh, will be a, a different evaluation process.
Okay, great. Fair enough. Uh, and.
Mayor, excuse me. Yeah, sorry. Just, and, and just, just, just one more clarification. Um, certainly your, your addition is clear. I just, I, just to clarify, your motion includes the staff recommendation as modified by the desk item that was submitted today?
Yes, that is correct. And I'll, I'll go ahead and clarify that with uh, Councilmember Moore. So the desk item is inclusive of the motion, correct?
Yes.
You accept that as a second? Okay, great.
Mr. Mayor, one more clarification. Is there anything related to the historic sign request?
Um, you know, we didn't put it in the first motion. Um, and so I'm going to go ahead and keep it out of the second motion as well, just to treat it with parity. But I know that this applicant has heard and the former applicant has heard, worked with historical society to, you know, get those signs acquisition. Um, so, you know, I, I know the prior applicant said they wanted it done yesterday, but don't do it, you know, right away and just take the sign down and destroy it, of course. So, so I mean, I, I take it on good faith that everyone's going to be working together on this. Uh, Vice Mayor Chow, you still have your hand raised. Did you, or you raised your hand again? Did you have another question at this point before we close this out? Uh, Vice Mayor Chow, unmute your microphone.
Yeah. So a follow-up, just trying to understand. So the, the applicant did request a rezoning uh, for the project at the time of application. Um, I think similar, some other projects have requests to the exception. And then it goes on for a long time. By the time it's on the council desk agenda right now, we kind of feel that you are forcing us, there is no opt, opt, option. We have to approve, approve whatever rezoning or exception request. And it's a housing project. We have, we, we, we feel our, we are pressured to approve. But that shouldn't be the way. Is there, should, shouldn't this kind of request be flagged and put on the council agenda earlier before the project is further along? So that we get input on whether this rezoning exception is considered compliant or, or acceptable by the council as a discretionary approval?
Thank you for that question, Vice Mayor Chow. I will take that as a reiteration of the prior question. And I just checked back in with staff. Lesson learned? I- is that correct? From the process? And it's a good process to be able to get some input prior to these types of modifications being made, uh, because we do have our requirements and, and, you know, improvements that we can be making to, to the project before, you know, the so-called last minute. Is that, is that workable from the staff perspective?
But how could the staff get input earlier? I.
Well, staff could bring it back to council, right? Before these types of modifications are made and presented to us. Uh, we could be apprised of the shot clock, you know, starting to run so that we can, you know, actively make a, a decision based on discussion and input from the public. So, um, are, are we, are we good with that commitment? Anyone from staff want to speak to this?
Yeah, so I, yeah, I'm happy to speak to it, Mayor. So I, I think when we've discussed this with um.
City Attorney.
The council, with the council before, um, we have, um, we, we think, you know, one of the lessons from this process is to make sure that where there are questions um, that are debatable, where council discretion can be preserved, you know, those decisions that are, that are made early in the process, um, which, you know, to some extent have to be made at a staff level, given the structure of state law, are made in a way that preserves uh, discretion to the maximum extent possible. And then that, and then that decision comes to council with, you know, all of the policy considerations and in some instances, some of the, you know, the legal risks that are attended with certain decisions and council can, can make that decision.
That's right.
And so that, you know, and so that, and, and so I, I think that's the discussions that we've had. And I, I think, you know, we are comfortable with that direction.
Yeah. And I, I think at the end of it, it's, it's so that the public can do its work and we can add our value to, you know, discussion. Obviously, there are a number of things that are being identified to, to improve the quality of what's delivered to, you know, to, to the public and, you know, both to the applicant and, and here the future uh, future residents. Um, well, I, I see Councilmember Willie, you have your hand raised. And did you have uh, any questions before we close the public hearing?
Just, just a brief comment. And that is, you know, each one of us is, is unique. But what we're talking about here, I think, is, is pretty common amongst us. And that is making sure that the developers understand what the general plan is. They can come and ask for any types of variations that they want. But if we have it clearly defined in the general plan, they're going to put more effort in to trying to meet it. And then when they decide it's, it just really doesn't want to work for them, what can they do for the community to balance it? And, you know, if we only hear the other one where we're trying to hamper, we keep getting a bad rap. And we're not. We're trying to do the best for the community at large, for all these requests that come to us. And we're here to negotiate and talk about it. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Willie. And um, you know, I, I think that's a, that's a nice cap. I, you know, I don't see further hands raised. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and close off the public hearing. I'm going to ask uh, the city clerk to conduct the first reading of ordinance number two-two dash two-two-three-seven.
This is the first reading of ordinance number two-two dash two-two-three-seven and ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino approving the rezoning of three parcels from planned development zoning with general commercial uses PCG to planned development zoning with commercial, with general commercial and residential uses PCG Res Z dash two-zero-two-zero dash zero-zero-one.
Okay, very good. And I'll just reiterate that I placed a motion on the table and that Councilmember Moore, if you could please verify that you seconded the motion.
Yes.
And it relates to this um, uh, this ordinance in addition to a few other resolutions. Okay. So now we are in formally the, the deliberative process. I will say for my own part that I don't have further deliberation to make on this. I, I think it's been a good process. Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand raised. And so would you like to uh, make some comments at this point?
So, um, I agree with Councilmember Moore that I would have liked to see a general plan amendment to uh, increase the height for two, three stories for this location since it's at the corner of a kind of busy intersection. And then I would like to see more reasonably sized townhomes. Um, that's, that's more um, available for moderate income families. And uh, if, try to fit in some commercial space. If not, I would like to see some, um, then maybe more units provided. And if BMR unit, um, four bedroom is too large and we have one point three five, then maybe another smaller BMR unit could be provided in place of the, in lieu fees. So I would like to try to see if we can continue this item for the developer to think about whether a general plan amendment uh, might be in line with their plan and then come back and see if they could possibly make a, a modification.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Are you proposing?
I'm making a motion. So I'm um, making a substitute motion to continue this item um, for the applicant to consider a potential general plan amendment so that we do have a project that complies with the amended general plan.
Is there a second to Vice Mayor Chow's substitute motion? Okay. Uh, Vice Mayor Chow, thank you for making the motion. Uh, it, um, it doesn't have a seconder at this point. Um, so any further comments or uh, procedure uh, proposed by council? I see uh, Councilmember Willie with a hand raised.
Yeah, I'll just say that, you know, I think the developers' plans that we've reviewed tonight show that he has so much already invested in it that at this point in time to uh, continue it, I, he would not be in his favor. And so that's why I didn't second the, that uh, substitute motion. I think he wants to see his project move along. And if it was a much bigger project and we were talking about another ten or fifteen units, yeah, I think it might be worthwhile. But, you know, to, to get an additional one or two units, um, I, I just don't see that. And he has to sacrifice the, and put in the retail. So I just thought I'd leave it at that. Mm-hmm. Let's move forward.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Councilmember Willie. Vice Mayor Chow, your hand is raised again.
So, um, so if we are moving forward, then I would like to the, the resolution or ordinance that we approve or recognize the point that this project does not completely align with um, the general plan in according to the past practices of Cupertino. And we are allowing this only to comply with the Housing Accountability Act. So that we are consistent with the past practices of Cupertino, which is we have been enforcing RCG means it must have ground floor retail. Um, so city attorney, is that possible to make it clear so that we don't open the door for more misinterpretation of the general plan? Because Councilmember Moore also doesn't think this complies. So, so it's up to interpretation. Then we should make it clear. This is our interpretation. We are making this allowance for this project one time only.
Um, so Vice Mayor, before I open um, the hearing back up so you can ask a question to the attorney, let, let me just go ahead and say for, for my part, I think that uh, your sentiment is captured. Um, I, I don't think that it would be a good idea to place it in the resolutions or in the ordinance. Um, but let me just open that back up because you're asking a question of staff here uh, with regard to the hearing. Uh, no, it's fine. Mr. City Attorney, uh, did you want to speak to Vice Mayor Chow's uh, comment with regard to um, indicating more um, qualitative assessments of compliance with the general plan and the rest of what she was describing?
Yeah, no, I, I, I think that you captured it, Mayor. I think, I think the, the record from this hearing does reflect um, the, you know, Vice Mayor Chow and, and Councilmember Moore's and perhaps other council members' sentiments in this regard. But I, I think it would um, certainly create confusion if the resolution included, included language suggesting that um, the project did not comply with the general plan.
So you mean the record of this meeting would make it clear that this is a one-time-only exception? We are, the interpretation of the city is still consistent with the past, which is RCG means um, commercial must be included, shall be included, even though we did not make it that clear in the general plan language?
Um, I, I might suggest that, that, that the clerk includes something to that effect in the minutes of the meeting.
That would be great.
Okay. Thank you very much. And um, Councilmember Moore, before I um, go to you, did you want to ask a question or did you want to make a comment? Because if you don't have a question, I'll go ahead and close back the hearing.
I, I, it is, I can form it and make it in the form of a question. Um.
Well, I'm not, I'm not asking you to make it a question. I'm just saying if it's a comment, then I'll go ahead and close the hearing so that we can proceed.
Well, I, I would like to have it stated that residential um, may only be on the upper floors according to the general plan. Um, and that to me seemed pretty, pretty clear uh, as well. So, uh, and uh, generally in the meeting minutes where comments such as this aren't included, so I would appreciate if, if they are. Um, that, that would be, that would be good. We, we often will see comments from the public, but some of the things that we say aren't captured. Um, so I'd appreciate to have that included as well. And uh, when um, the project, uh, the shot clock started and ended, um, before it came to uh, the, the ERC, there was no ability for the, the city council to, to weigh in. And, and it was, it was already too late before it got to the ERC when I started looking at the, the general plan requirements, um, which was a, that's a, that's a problem for us. So I, and as you've said, we're, we hopefully aren't going to see that in the future.
Okay. Yeah. So in the form of a question, just, you know, um, extending upon Vice Mayor Chow's uh, question, can we include what uh, Councilmember Moore was um, vocalizing a moment ago in the minutes as well? Um, either the city attorney or the city clerk can provide a, hopefully affirmative response to that.
Yes, Mayor. I will include Vice Mayor and Councilmember Moore's comment. Yes, Mayor, I will include Vice Mayor and Councilmember Moore's comments as requested.
Okay, very good. I'm going to go ahead and close back the, the hearing. We're in the deliberative process at this time. And so Vice Mayor, let me go ahead and defer to Councilmember Wei, who has her hand up as well. She hasn't had a chance to deliberate yet. So Councilmember Wei?
I do want to apologize. I actually have a question.
Oh, you have a question? Okay, well, let me, let me just back up. I'll open up the hearing.
This question is for our city attorney because if I've been listening carefully and understood what our city attorney has been saying, this project is conforming to our general plan, but not to the zoning, but because of the laws, that if it has a conflict, it, it, the general plan prevails. So if, am I not hearing correctly? I, I heard that, yes, we can put Vice Mayor's comments and then Councilmember Moore's comments, but comments, if our comments conflict with the law, or, so I'm a little confused. So maybe, maybe, you know, our city attorney can clarify a little bit? Did I misunderstand that this project is conforming with our general plan, even though it's not, doesn't conform with the RCG zoning codes? And, but the general plan prevails if there are conflicts according to the law?
Yeah, the project has been determined to comply with the general plan. The applicant has also, has requested a zoning modification for the project as well, which will bring the zoning into alignment with the general, with the general plan designation, even though, you know, arguably that zoning modification is not necessary for reasons of state law. But yes, that, you know, that, that, that determination has been made. And, you know, and, and, and for the reasons that we discussed today, there are significant legal consequences potentially from revisiting that determination at the time.
All right, thank you. That clarifies what I understood. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wei. Vice Mayor Chow?
So could the minute, could the minute also capture the impact of the Housing Accountability Act that this kind of project would have complied to general plan, the zoning and the interpretation of the city in the, of the general plan? But because of Housing Accountability Act, now the city's hands are tied and we, we are forced to rezone because they don't have to comply with the zoning, because we captured that in the minutes.
Well, I'm going to make that the last question, Vice Mayor Chow. You know, honestly, yeah, so, so Chris, did you want to, you know, speak to that, that question?
So there's no, 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 no legal reason why that can't be captured in the minutes. Now, the verdict here is then to the practicality of these requests at a certain level.
Yes, normally, we would, we, council has approved the form of action minutes, which is just strictly the action. But in this case, I'm happy to include Vice Mayor's additional comments, and I'll just capture it as such that, that the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Moore made the additional comments. I can frame it that way, to be included in the minutes.
Okay, so I'm closing off the, the public comment, the, the public hearing at this point. Councilmember Willie, before I go to your raised hand, you know, I, I think it's fair to say that the general gist of this is that there are process-oriented improvements that we can be making to make sure that the public as well as the council has their input points. And so I, I think our city attorney said it best. In order to preserve the decisional options, you know, staff is going to proceed in the future, you know, based upon some of the experiences that we've, we've had here. And, and make sure that there are more of those checking points to the extent that discretion is applied in a way that would optimize the options of the public. That's what's going to be done. And so that's what I'm hearing from this direction and these requests to capture, you know, sentiments in the minutes. And so let's go to Councilmember Willie. Councilmember Willie, do you have further deliberation to make at this point?
Yeah, just a comment. I want to be sure that we are clear. The general plan, as Councilman Moore said, residential units are above the ground floor. That means technically, this project does not conform to the general plan. Let me say it again. This project does not conform to the general plan. But because staff approved and said that it did conform to the general plan, it becomes a mute point. It does not make it comply to the general plan. It just removes any further discussion. It does not conform in the sense that the residential units are not all above the ground floor. And to confuse us with that, I think, is a disservice. Thank you.
All right, thank you, John. You know, honestly, I think the point has been made. You know, I, I think, you know, our, our staff here is what's happening. And, you know, hopefully that, you know, there's that adherence to those requirements. And, you know, I, I think we're at a point right now where we've adhered to, you know, the legal requirements and, you know, we've protected the interests of the city and gotten those sentiments out there. And so I don't see further hands raised at this point for deliberation. We have the motion. We have the second. Okay, so Vice Mayor Chow, did you have a further deliberative point that you want before?
So, yeah, I like that the project has a really nice setback along foothill and in the corner. So this corner would have been a great location for live, live-work units that the staff has suggested. And that, but the applicant did not wish to pursue that. And this kind of a negotiation could have happened earlier, but now it's too late. There are other things that could happen. It's too late. So it's not like I don't like the project. I really like the project. I, I wish the units were smaller, but we need more residential units. But when a project does not comply with the general plan, it makes it inequitable for the other developers who did their very best to comply. They did, they provided the retail units that, so that they couldn't make as much profit. And then we have this developer who does not comply. And then they have all the reasons for they cannot comply. That makes, this, it is an equitable treatment between developers that I don't like to see. Therefore, why we make laws, why we want people to comply is to be fair to everyone. Otherwise, one person push back, they get more. Other people who follow the law, they, they have, they, they, they get less. And that's just not fair. So, yeah, where our hands are tied. And I do like the project. I just think this kind of process should be fair. The council should not be put into a position where we have no room for any negotiation, no room for any other modification. This should not be the position we are forced to be in. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. And Councilmember Moore?
Mayor Paul, I was wondering if you could remind me if you included the issue with the trees in your motion, similar to the previous project. I, I just, I can't recall.
I'm sorry, remind me what you're referring to with issues with the trees, because they're...
There was, I think it was Pyrrhus calariana.
Oh, right. I, I'm not going to sidestep the question, but I, I intended it to be treated the same way that the other project was treated with regard to this, and that was staff direction to work with the applicant. I, I heard the applicant's representative saying that they are happy to work in order to, you know, preserve the, the native percentage of plantings. I see Pew with the camera on and the microphone on. I'll turn on the microphone if you want to.
No, we're, we're happy to do that, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, no, I'll go. Okay, great.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I just, I couldn't recall what happened to that.
Yeah, no, that's my, my understanding of, you know, how we're going to proceed on that. And I think those are great comments, by the way, you know, from the public. And, you know, very, very, very needed, very apropos. So thank you and kudos for doing that background work. Okay, Vice Mayor Chow, I think we'll lay a last word before we...
Regarding the motion, I made the previous motion. I remember I included the language that it will add that the staff will negotiate with the applicant to address the landscaping issue.
I, I didn't recall that, but if you want to go ahead and...
Maybe the city clerk can confirm, so that we are...
Mayor, may I, may I confirm?
Well, let me just do this. Make the language consistent with the motion item on, on this item, on this aspect of the, of the motion. And so let me see if Councilmember Moore agrees to that second.
Yes.
Okay, great. So we'll, we'll just keep it in conformity and the understandings are consistent. Okay. All right, great. So let's go ahead and take a vote on the motion on the table. Thank you very much, everyone, for your great work tonight.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
You wish to carry his amnesty?
Okay, great. Congratulations to everyone, including the applicants and the public. Thank you to our staff. Thank you to our public. You know, welcome City Manager Troop to Cupertino, you know, and, yeah, this all, you know, bode well for our future. There's a lot of work ahead of us. We have not really had discretion taken away. We simply have more obligations. And we'll obviously meet those obligations, you know, in full force without any reservation as to, you know, putting our wherewithal and our abilities forward to the public and with the applicant. So thank you very much. Best of luck with everything. Again, Happy New Year, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Yes, yes. Thank you for your time and efforts. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Bye.
All right, everyone, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this special meeting and remind everyone that we have a regularly scheduled meeting next Tuesday, January 18th. That will start at 6:45 PM. So have a great night, and we'll see you then.
Thank you.